Jasmine Chavez Diaz, Doris Sotolindaba.
Present.
And the best on here today.
Okay. And we're gonna get into the Pledge of Allegiance. Do we have some? I'm sorry, the Pledge of Allegiance. Do we have anybody to?
We do. We have a student from Salazar that is going to be leading in as in the Pledge of Allegiance, Marlene Rosas. But she's gonna be introduced by her wonderful principal who was here, so Mr. Sermano. So, I mean, thank you for being here.
Thank you. See a lot of River Eagles in the house too. So congratulations Eagles. But today I am here, honored. My name is David Sermano, I'm the principal of Ruben Salazar High School, and I am honored to speak to you about a young woman, sorry, that not only represents our school, Ruben Salazar High School, but also embodies those characteristics that we desire in all of our graduates. She's a leader, collaborator, communicator, and makes positive contributions to her community. This young lady is Marlene Rosas. We have had the honor and pleasure of having Marlene Rosas join us at Ruben Salazar last April. Marlene began her schooling in nearby Belle Gardens and joined a Retro Unified School District in her seventh grade year. Marlene attended North Park and then El Rancho. In her sophomore year, Marlene said her grades started to slip as she felt disconnected to her schooling. After transferring to Salazar and getting acclimated to her new school, I am proud to say that Marlene has three days this four-year and is on target to graduate. Marlene is highly heartbroken. And she is a member of the superintendent's student advisory. Marlene is also very helpful. It's her Marlene's good upon herself to help another student's parents during parent conference. She took them back to all their classes and interpreted for the parent as needed. And all, she probably helped that parent for over an hour. Something that might be the best example of Marlene's character happened last school year after she transferred to us. January was in April and soon after we had a basketball game planned with Frontier High School. All schools agreed that it would be a competition would be co-ed. So we needed a girl and our coach, Mr. Galarza, asked Marlene. As soon as he answered, she said yes. We later learned that Marlene is not necessarily fond of basketball. They didn't really want to play. But she did not want to let us down and did not want to tell the teacher the word no. Marlene played and she did well, but you would have never known that she wasn't key on plan. Marlene lives with her mom, Teta, and her older sister, Anaii. Marlene regularly attends church where she is a member of the church choir. Marlene plans to attend a community college next year with her goal being to transfer to a four-year university. At this time, she is looking to a career in psychology or becoming a preschool teacher. And as soon as like Ms. Rosas, that make our school a great place, she provides us with a great role model for future Salazar students. And we are proud of the leader that she has become. Again, I am truly proud to introduce to you Ms. Marlene Rosas.
My name is Marlene Rosas, and I'm a senior at Ruben Salazar High School. I would like to tell you what Salazar means to me. Salazar to me is a place that makes me feel seen and heard. I remember when I was a junior, I had just arrived at Salazar and I was scared, terrified, and nervous. I felt this way because of what I was told about Salazar. I heard that Salazar is this school of bad kids, kids with no future. Kids that had to leave, but are still in control. My teachers don't have no hope for us. Kids that had no one to forgive them. Kids that literally have no future. Salazar wasn't, and still isn't, what I heard and believed. It will never be that place. Salazar staff make you feel seen and heard. They make you feel as if you matter unless you have a purpose in life. So many Salazar husbands, like a certain family, of course, there is no one there that has blood related to me, but I can assure you that Salazar is a second home to many students like me. To me personally, transferring to Salazar has made me realize a lot about who I am and what I can actually become. Thanks to the staff at Salazar, I've been open to trying new things, like being a spokesperson for our school, joining new clubs and programs. I'm a part of Salazar's youth team. So what does Salazar mean to me? To me, Salazar means home, my home, where I could be who I want to be, where I could talk to anyone about any problems in my life. But also where I can laugh and care with this fellow, whether it's Miss Bala Sturridge, Miss Sturrock, or someone else. There is someone. There is always someone available there. So to me, Salazar is a family, a place I can come from. Thank you. But please join me in saying the prayers we stand for. Please stand up. Please place your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the five holy cities of America, and to the public who wishes us one may dream, underground, in the north of the world, for liberty and justice for all.
Marlene, if you could please stay up there just for a little bit longer. I just wanted to see, open it up to the, to the horse and the comments. Just keep pressing.
Marlene, my name is Marlene, so every time I hear your name, I'm like, oh. But you were, you had a second chance and you took advantage of it. And to me, that's just speaks volumes, just how you speak about South Park. It's great. And thank you for changing that narrative and for making it your home. Back to you, straight days. I'm so excited. I hope you can psychology or become a preschool teacher, regardless of what you set your eyes to. I know you're gonna be a great success. So I hope you come back one day and give back. That's so, so proud of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you for coming. I'm just so excited by your motivation and the way you speak of Salazar. I also went to continuation school for a time, so I would have been proud to go to school with you. Thank you for coming.
Chris Miller.
Marlene, thank you for sharing your experience with us and for, you know, just being seen and being heard is so important. And the fact that you were able to share that with everyone here is amazing. We're so proud of you and I wish you the best in your post-secondary education.
Marlene, thank you for being here with us today and your heartfelt comments about what Salazar means to you. With great folks that are leading our school there, it's great to see you blossom. And what I took away the most from your comments is you have a plan for yourself, and that is amazing. And you have a future that's unlimited. And I think since you want to be a preschool teacher, we know someone who can, you know, get you a job when you're ready to work here for the district or any other district. But congratulations to you and well done.
Marlene, good job. You know, you're an testament to no matter what environment someone's placed in, if they really want to do good, if they really want to make change, it's possible. So that goes to you, to your family, or I know your family's here. Congratulations to Mr. Sermano and his staff also. Great job. Most importantly, did you keep on playing basketball?
Jasmine Chavez Diaz. Doris Sotolindaba. And the best on here today.
Okay. And we're gonna get into the, uh, why should we do we have some, I'm sorry, the pledge of allegiance, do you have anybody to?
We do, we have a student from Salazar that is going to be leading in as an, in, and the pledge of allegiance, one of the most, but she's gonna be introduced by her wonderful principal who's here. So Mr. Sremeno, so, I mean, thank you for being here.
Thank you. See a lot of River Eagles in the house too, so congratulations Eagles, but today I am here, honored. My name is David Sremeno, I'm the principal of Ruben Salazar High School, and I'm honored to speak to you about a young woman, sorry, that not only represents our school, Ruben Salazar High School, but also embodies those characteristics that we desire in all of our graduates. She's a leader, collaborator, communicator, and makes positive contributions to her community. This young lady is Marlene Rosas. We have had the honor and pleasure of having Marlene Rosas join us at Ruben Salazar last April. Marlene began her schooling in nearby Bell Gardens and joined a Rancho Unified School District in her seventh grade year. Marlene attended North Park and then El Rancho. In her sophomore year, Marlene said her grades started to slip as she felt disconnected to her schooling. After transferring to Salazar and getting acclimated to her new school, I am proud to say that Marlene has straight A's this four-year and is on target to graduate. Marlene is highly heartbroken. And she is a member of the superintendent's student advisory. Marlene is also very helpful. It's your Marlene's good upon herself to help another student's parents during parent conference. She, uh, took them back to all their classes and interpreted for the parent as needed. And all, she probably helped that parent for over an hour. Something that might be the best example of Marlene's character happened last school year after she transferred to us. January was in April and soon after we had a basketball game planned with Frontier High School. All schools agreed that it would be, uh, the competition would be co-ed. So we needed a girl and our coach, Mr. Galarza, asked Marlene. Soon as he asked her, she said yes. We later learned that Marlene is not necessarily fond of basketball, didn't really wanna play, but she did not wanna let us down and did not want to tell the teacher the word no. Marlene played and she did well, but you would never know that she wasn't key on plan. Marlene lives with her mom, Patta, and her older sister, Anaii. Marlene regularly attends church where she is a member of the church choir. Marlene plans to attend a community college next year with her goal being to transfer to a four-year university. At this time, she is looking to a career in psychology or becoming a preschool teacher. And as soon as like Ms. Rosas, that make our school a great place, she provides us with a great role model for future Salazar students, and we are proud of the leader that she has become. Again, I am truly proud to introduce to you Ms. Marlene Rosas.
Hello, my name is Marlene Rosas, and I'm a senior at Ruben Salazar High School. I would like to tell you what Salazar means to me. Salazar to me is a place that makes me feel seen and heard. I remember when I was a junior, I had just arrived at Salazar, and I was scared, terrified, and nervous about what was to come. That felt so because of what I was told about Salazar. I heard that Salazar is this school about kids, kids with no future. Kids that had to leave, but are still showing, their teachers don't have no hope for us. Kids that had no one to forgive them, literally have no future. Salazar wasn't, and still isn't, what I heard and believed. It will never be that place. Salazar staff make you feel seen and heard. They make you feel as if you matter, unless you have a purpose in life. So many Salazar has been like a separate family, of course. There is no one there that has blood related to me, but I can assure you that Salazar is a second home to many students like me. To me personally, transferring to Salazar has made me realize a lot about who I am and what I can actually become. Thanks to the Salazar, I've been open to trying new things. Like being a spokesperson for our school, joining new clothes and that program. I'm a part of Salazar's youth team. So what does Salazar mean to me? To me, Salazar means home, my home, where I could be who I wanna be, where I could talk to anyone about any problems in my life, but also where I could laugh and care with this fellow, whether it's Miss Bala Stermis, Esther O'Hus, or someone else. There is someone. There is always someone available there. So to me, Salazar is a family, a place I can come from. Thank you. But please join me in saying the flags will be stamped. Please place your right hand over your heart. My pledge of allegiance to the five, only one who says so, my conservative public, which is gas, one, a, two, and three, and four, and five, six, and seven, and eight, and nine, and ten.
Okay, maybe you can please, um, stay up there just for a little bit longer. I just wanna see, open it up to the, uh, to the horse and have the, um, comments. Trusty Perez.
Marlene, my name's Marlene, so every time I hear your name, I'm like, um, but you were, you had a second chance and you took advantage of it, and to me, that's just speaks volumes, just how you speak about Salazar. It's great, and thank you for changing that narrative and for making it your home. Back to you, straight A's, I'm so excited. I hope you can psychology or become a preschool teacher, regardless of what you set your eyes to, I know you're gonna be a great success. So I hope you come back one day and give back. Um, but so, so proud of you. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. I'm just so excited by your motivation and the way you speak of Salazar. I also went to continuation school for a time, so I would have been proud to go to school with you. Thank you for coming.
Chris Miller.
Marlene, thank you for sharing your experience with us and for, uh, you know, just being seen and being heard is so important, and the fact that you were able to share that with everyone here is, is amazing. We're so proud of you and I wish you the best in your post-secondary education.
Marlene, thank you for being here with us today, um, and your heartfelt comments, uh, about what Salazar means to you. Uh, with great folks that are leading our school there. Uh, it's great to see you blossom, and what I took away the most from your comments is you have a plan for yourself, and that is amazing, and you have a future that's unlimited. Uh, and I think since you wanna be a preschool teacher, we, we know someone who can, uh, you know, get you a job when you're ready to, to work here for the district or any other district, but congratulations to you and have well done.
Marlene, good job. You know, you're, you're a testament to, uh, no matter what environment someone's placed in, if they really wanna do good, if they really wanna make change, it's possible. So that, that goes to you, to your family, or I know your family's here. Uh, congratulations to Mr. Sremeno and his staff also. Great job. Uh, most of all, did you keep on playing basketball or you?
Um, I still practice basketball, but I've never got any.
Great job, and then if you don't mind, I'd like to ask you to come on so we can take a picture really quick. And as you come up here, I'll just read this really quick. It says, oh, Rancho Unified School, uh, District Board of Education appreciating to Marlene Rosas in recognition of your participation on Rancho Unified School Board, uh, meeting, the Board of Education Superintendent, commend you for your support and inspiration. So congra- congratulations again. Okay, so moving forward, we're gonna go with the, um, adoption of the agenda.
And we do have a couple of changes to make, but before we do that, I just wanna make a quick announcement to, uh, families. Uh, so, uh, please make an announcement, that's for me. Uh, a student who will be recognized, uh, step out to the lobby right now. So if you're one of the students that's being recognized, we ask you to, to step out to, to the lobby because we're gonna organize you in a mechanism. So there's staff outside who will help you, uh, outside. So all students will be recognized, you can just step out. It's a lot of you.
So as if I allow, I'll just go ahead with, um, item A, approve the agenda for the regular Board of Education meeting in January twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five.
Uh, so item sixteen A-one, uh, minutes of special program reading, uh, held on December tenth, twenty-two, in Florida. Uh, there's a reinforcement management of available and registration table. Also, item sixteen D-six, change the title and recommendations and pro-change order number two. P and I Engineering and Testing Lab and Replace Attachments Available at the Registration Table. And item seventeen, uh, point C, point two, acceptance of the Rancho Unified School District's uh, twenty-twenty-three, twenty-nine, four, financial audit report, the festival of the year will be June thirty, twenty-one, four, and replace it with the attachments available at the registration table. That's all. Aside from that, those are all.
Yes. Go ahead.
Making sure that we have the latest attachment test.
We'll give it to you right now, just in case there's another to date.
Okay, so with, with that being said, can I get a motion? It's a motion by, uh, trustee LaFarga, it's taken by trustee Sovedra. Trusty Perez?
Yes.
Trusty Mahia?
Yes.
Trusty Sovedra. Just LaFarga?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay, so, uh, reports of actions taken in close sessions.
There were no, uh, actions taken in close session.
Okay, so moving on to item eight, student reports, ASB President of Rancho High School, Camina Zudo, is, I, okay, she's not here, so we're gonna move on to ASB spokesperson for Salazar, Mr. Nomen Barada.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education, district administrators, teachers, cabinet members, and community members. I hope you all enjoy the holidays and welcome back to a brand-new year, two thousand twenty-five. I would like to share a few events that are happening on our campus. Last week, January thirteenth, our third quarter began. We wanted to take this opportunity to congratulate the seniors who have met their requirements and are returning back to Rancho High School. We hope that they had an amazing time at Salazar, and we welcome every new student to our campus to begin their quarter with us. We had a new parent slash student orientation Monday, January thirteenth, four-thirty in the cafeteria. Families and students had the opportunity to visit and learn more about our school and campus. Tomorrow on January twenty-second, our second quarter assembly will happen. It'll be held in the cafeteria to recognize and congratulate students who did an excellent job for their accomplishments this quarter. On Wednesday, January twenty-third, a group of Salazar students are going to UCLA with our after-school program, the prep program. For an opportunity to visit the campus, discover more about the academic offerings, and to get a chance to experience college life. Thank you very much, and I hope you all enjoy your evening.
The second quarter is gonna be, did you still have eleven or, so it's thirty-five or eleven?
The second quarter assembly will be.
I think I had it on the calendar.
It does not say here, but it'll happen between our fourth period, which will be eleven, yeah, eleven, twenty-five. And it'll be held in the cafeteria. So when parents walk up or first come to the school, there's going to be a sign, uh, showing them where to enter the cafeteria.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
No problem. You guys have a great night.
Yes, sir, you too. Okay, moving on, uh, item nine, awards and recognitions, uh, item A. Recognition of Rancho High School student athletes from the fall twenty-twenty-four seasons.
And we love this part of the, uh, the U V, this is where we get to recognize our wonderful students who have done so much work and, and being part of, of our athletic programs, you really wanna recognize all our athletes because they, they really do a wonderful job, not in, in the living, what they take. Being in the sport in high school, these, these days, not an easy task. The people, they have to, um, practice, and it's sometimes it's a year-round type of thing that happens, they're working out, they're conditioning, and, and then they have to keep up with their studies, because the students that are being recognized today are not just, uh, students who have, uh, really done well in their sport. They've also are scholars, you know, they demonstrated through their academics that they have achieved a certain level of achievement. So actually, to talk us through this, it's actually gonna be Dr. Renata, who's the athletic director. Let's give her a big round of applause as he comes up. Talk about the scientific.
Uh, good afternoon, board. I'm David. Thank you guys for inviting us, inviting our kids. Uh, as I was thinking about this afternoon, um, this is my fourth year being the athletic director, and, um, before this, I was a coach for nine years. And a lot of times, it seems that, you know, we're all so busy, uh, with life and work, and we can take things for granted. Uh, but I was thinking about tonight specifically, and what an honor it is to be able to pause from our day and to be able to recognize our kids, uh, with everything that's happening in the world around them. Um, they really are the only ones that can make things better going forward. And even though we get caught in these routines, it, it is special, and this is a different group of kids from last year, right, and from the previous years. So they, they're worthy of our attention, our recognition. Um, and I was just excited to be able to come and talk about them, talk about our fall sports, um, where we had some great successes, but we also had kids just overcome so many different things. Um, so for parents, if you're here, I would like to give you guys a hand on that, your kids, please give yourself a hand. And, uh, just, I'm just so hopeful for our sports going forward and our kids. Our, a lot of our fall sports have had to overcome a lot the last few years with our, uh, construction project. So, for example, football, they went these last two years without having a home field. Um, and that means that they didn't have a place to practice. Um, so the fact that we're able to talk about scholarship accomplishments and also athletic accomplishments is a testament to them. Um, and the same goes for our other five fall sports. So we're gonna start with recognizing students who achieved higher than a three-point-O during their fall season. And we're gonna begin with Boys' Water Polo. Uh, their head coach is Marissa Lopez, so Boys' Water Polo can make their way in, that would be great, and we can give them a round of applause. So these were students who competed at the varsity level and had higher than a three-point-O during the fall season. Uh, just to give you guys some context, our Boys' Water Polo was, uh, full of novices this year. So we had a lot of kids out there that had never played water polo before. Um, but they were able to string together some wins this year, um, they were able to maintain their grades, um, high, and then the biggest thing, this was their fifth year without having a home, a home pool. Um, so they're really excited about our, our aquatic center being open. Um, and these kids went out of their way to practice at the county pool and at other local pools, um, and really made us proud. Coach Marissa, who looks like a student who was my former student, not too long ago, is their head coach. She did a wonderful job.
Marlene, are you here?
If you wanna get in there for the picture.
All right, so up next, we actually have two teams coming up. Um, they operate as one program, but they're technically two different teams. It's our boys and girls cross-country team. Our cross-country team has been without a home base for the last two years. Um, Coach Jill Basinato has done a wonderful job with our kids scheduling practices off-site, getting them to races, and I know, just like our other groups, are excited about the opening of our stadium. Again, these were students who had higher than a three-point-O during their fall season.
Is any parents who wanna come take the picture for the group? There we go. And thank you guys. Thank you guys. Okay, up next, we're gonna welcome our football team, uh, who had a great fall. Uh, we'll be talking about their accomplishments as well a little bit later on, but they were able to make it all the way to the stadium. Had a higher than a three-point-O during their busy football season. Again, they were also practicing without a home field, a home facility, and you played basically ten road games the last two years. Their head coach is Adrian Madrono, and with them is assistant coach, uh, Jonathan Reeves as well. They're gonna take a group picture of you guys. And then if there's any parents who wanna come up and take pictures of the group, go ahead.
You're taller.
One, two, three.
Good job, everyone. Thank you. Glad you suited up again, I think.
Um, before I, welcome girls tennis on to the court. I do wanna mention that, because of another fall sport, now they'll be in attendance tonight, but I did wanna make mention of that, there's two athletes who received this award. And now we have girls tennis up on, on the stage. They're coached by Coach Gonzalez. Our girls tennis team, uh, really, what I was able to see from them this fall, um, one, they had to overcome, uh, the hurdle of losing their best player to, to an injury. Um, but I really saw their, their team come together. Um, and I saw in them like, just that togetherness, um, and a, a cultural change in them, and, uh, and from their outfits to the way that they would stick together, um, and how they would promote their games and promote each other. So girls, it was really wonderful being able to watch you this fall. Coach Gonzalez, great job. And they were tied with girls volleyball to the highest team GPA for ours. And then severe here, you would take pictures of you two. And then, last but not least, our group volleyball. Head coach by, uh, Mr. Minnis. Uh, and one area, uh, one area of growth that I saw with our girls team this year is, uh, they were able to win nine more games. They were able to win nine more games this last year than the previous year, so there was definitely an encore improvement from our girls. Um, and I know that the future is bright for this group, and just like girls tennis, they were also tied for the highest team GPA. Great job, ladies. And to be like. Then, uh, we just have one more, uh, round of awards. Uh, as we finish with girls volleyball here though, I do wanna take one more time to acknowledge all our students who are above a three point O. In the middle of their busy seasons, and we could give them one more round of applause. Uh, this last section of awards, uh, we actually have an overlap between what we usually do, which is our first team all league awards. So these are war, awards that are given to our students, uh, based on votes from not only our coaches, but the other coaches from the other four schools in our league. Um, and usually every sport has this type of award, unless we're in a individual sport, like, uh, when it comes down to like cross country or tennis where they actually have rankings. Um, so we're gonna honor our students who receive, um, first team Del Rio League awards, it just so happens that, uh, for football. Eight of our boys who got awards for first team Del Rio League also received all CIF awards because of their. Uh, record run this last, this postseason, so we're gonna be recognizing that group. Um, so I would like them to step forward if possible. And we could give them a round of applause. And the girls volleyball, like you mentioned, the smaller who received a, a first team award, she's not here tonight, and for boys water polo, we had Robert Goldis. Who received an award tonight, we've got football boys, go ahead and come up, we're gonna recognize you guys. There's supposed to be about four or five of them here that could not make it tonight, but. This group is representative of our, our great football team, what a great fall, and I know that we're gonna have another board meeting where we're able to. Recognize them for their accomplishments as well. Boys, congratulations on all your accomplishments. Jonathan, did you wanna speak, do you wanna say something on behalf of the team or what's wrong? Not so good, Jonathan, I mean. And before we do that, I do wanna just thank my other fall coaches who are here, Thomas Menace for girls volleyball, we had Gonzalez for. Uh, the last time I spoke to you about the next year for working with ten. The times for boys and girls constantly, it's which ones for, uh, boys and girls constantly evolve, what's you guys?
Yes, hello, thank you very much, um, assistant, uh, coach Jonathan Reese, uh, for football. Um, we did have a, a very magical one this year, um, we had eight CIF. Uh, first team all league, uh, players, most of their Rancho history this year. Um, once the CI finals came a little short, uh, but these boys been working since, uh, last February. Um, and showed out this year, um, first and foremost, I wanna thank the city of Pico Rivera. Uh, all you guys came out to that championship game in Alway and Irvine, that was the most electric, um, atmosphere I've ever been a part of. So we truly wanna appreciate everyone in this room for going out there and showing support, um, as well as all the other coaches from other sports. Um, thank you guys for always being out there and, and supporting us as well, um. Gary Gorenaga and Mr. Gorenaga, your principal have shown tremendous support to athletics at Rancho, I wanna give them a round of applause as well, so thank you.
I'll give the opportunity, if the board will have any words to say, go ahead and give it to the department director.
Back away with the coach, just the, the feeling of Pico Rivera at our Rancho Dons at that stadium was amazing, so thank you, thank you, boys, you're making us proud. Everyone also, for the GPs, peanut sports is hard, right, I was in the sports, but I was in bed. But before school, the after school, the weekends, you have homework, navigating everything's. And you still maintained, you're such a great GPA, that's a huge accomplishment. For the parents, every time taking them to practice, to games, being there for them, that is just, thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, for everyone here, thank you for making our Rancho of Pico Rivera proud, I'm so proud of you, thank you.
I, I have no words, other than you guys are all awesome, maintaining your GPAs and getting to these practices, getting to these games, it's. Just amazing, congratulations to you all, to all the parents and the coaches, congratulations to you as well.
Just echoing the same sent sentiments, uh, we are so proud of our scholar athletes, we put in the work and it shows. Uh, on and off the field, just very proud of you, congratulations.
Yeah, I'll just echo, very proud, um, uh, of the accomplishments of our scholar athletes. The way our coaches lead the way and the parents that are supporting system, uh, to make that succeed, so thank you for just keeping El Rancho, uh, high school on the map.
Because, because it's a group effort, you know, the teachers, the parents, the students, you know, the, the, the constant, you know, studying, the, the, the scholastic, the. The sports, myself being a scholar athlete at El Rancho High School, uh, team captain and everything, I know what it entails, so a big kudos. Big kudos to not only the students, but to the parents, and I know the parents are the ones that are driving them to school, the. Some of the parents here that I'm looking at are, are coaches as well, you know, they're, not only do they look after their kids, but they look after other kids in our district as well, so. Big kudos to the parents and to the coaches that are up against the wall over there, and if I missed anybody on this side, big kudos to all the coaches, myself being a coach, I know what it entails. As well, so thank you guys, you guys are what makes Pico Rivera, Pico Rivera, and yes, that was an awesome game. Okay, with that being said, I'm gonna, uh, we're gonna take a five, yeah, take a five just to let the parents and the, the students, if you wanna go ahead and next.
Uh, onto item ten, public comments, and before we start the, um, items on the agenda, we're glad, uh, have those, uh, are about to read out.
Our goal is to allow the free exchange of views among board members and its staff and each team members of the public and the board. While ma- maintaining a respectful and orderly atmosphere. It is the board's policy to encourage all interested individuals to contribute constructive ideas and perspectives during the meeting. While respecting the right of others to express their ideas and perspectives. The board welcomes disagreement, but it's important that this group may be expressed in a meaningful and respectful manner. Speakers should not make personal attacks on, on other individuals. To promote these goals, we ask that everyone be courteous, patient, and respectful while others are speaking. Each speaker should feel free to express his overview point freely, but in a courteous and respectful way. Speaking precisely and within the allotted time limits. Speakers should also try to avoid repeating what others have already said. Each speaker will be allotted a maximum total of three minutes to address the boards on matters that are not on the agenda. Each speaker will be allotted a maximum of three minutes for items on the agenda. A maximum of fifteen minutes will be allotted time per agenda item. Members of the public will not speak unless they are recognized by the board president, chairperson, and will only speak from the podium. Not directly from the audience at any time. Speakers may not allocate their time to other speakers.
Thank you so much, with that being said, uh, Dr. Menace.
We do, we have, uh, one person for the, uh, Luke Orange, and that's Fernando Islas.
Um, good evening, Senator Pico Rivera, Orange Unified, um, my parent here is a, uh, a student here. At our Rancho Unified School District, uh, for starters. Um, I'm gonna speak on what's on the, I don't know the agenda, I just wanna point out that, uh, one of your employees, Jasmine Chavez. Physically stood in front of the door, uh, as I was trying to make my way into this, uh, board meeting, so I just wanna put that on re- record and, uh, point it out. Um, what I wanna speak to, uh, on the agenda item is, um, uh. This, this, uh, rationale of, um, trying to allocate ten thousand dollars. Uh, on part attached dollars, a lot of funds, um, to send three of our board men, three of our board members to, uh, Washington DC. Uh, I object to that, um, I don't agree with, uh, allocating, uh, those funds to do such, uh, reason being is, um. Last you guys were there, uh, last year, uh, I believe it was around beautiful timeframe, uh, uh, your board member, Ecto LaFarga posted on Facebook. Uh, posted a trip to Washington DC and the, uh, you guys were rubbing elbows with genocidal maniacs. Um, he had tagged all four of these politicians, which were, uh, Linda Sanchez, Pete Agler, Pete Aglar. Adam Schiff and Nancy Pelosi, uh, these all four voted, uh, back then to send more money to the terrorist state of Israel. Uh, well into a genocide that has killed over, uh, well over fifty thousand Palestinians in fifteen months. So, uh, that's pretty much what I wanted to come up here and talk about, I object to that, I object to you guys. Representing our Rancho Unified School District and rubbing elbows with such people. Um, somebody came in here last board meeting and said that, uh, one of our high schools, Salazar's in shambles. Um, that's in, in, in bad condition, and, uh, if you guys wanna allocate ten thousand dollars for you guys to take a trip to Washington DC soon.
Thank you, Mr. Islas.
And that is all for, uh, items on the agenda.
So move on to, uh, public type, uh, comments, items not on the agenda, you'll first.
And so, uh, Mario Ross.
I think it's supposed to say, I have it as well as process.
Yeah, no, don't worry, everybody does that, I'm used to it. All good evening, everyone, all members, uh, CDP Corriera, my name is Mario Rosas, I'm a resident and a parent of two little girls that are part of this history. I just wanna share a little bit of my feelings in regards to those incidents that have been happening lately in the Rancho High School. Uh, before anything of that sort, I wanna say like, I'm very grateful for everything that you guys lost that you for my little ones. Um, this is one of the reasons that, uh, me, my family, my wife, and I decided that we don't wanna move away from Pico Rivera. Okay, so, I've been like, uh, for the last couple of years, noticing a lot of red flags, um, in about. The safety around the schools or, or on where I always bring my daughters to. I just wanna like, highlight to you guys, uh, my daughters are my life. There is nothing that I would not do for my daughters, I guess, we're all partners here, so we understand how precious they are for us, right? I'm, I'm very grateful that I had to go find with you guys, but I'm not really concerned about those incidents, and I hope that, uh. Whoever is steering this vehicle location pays more attention to those details because it's not about the knife, it's about. The knife, it was meant to be when it got pulled out. Thus many are cases in the past. We don't wanna have a nice, I mean. Whatever species we do after incidents happens, we don't want more of those suspicious excuses. We need to be more aware of the, of those things and hire the right people to, to be like completely alert on whatever's going on in the environment. We are adults, we know how, every, we all were teenagers, we know how teenagers are, and that's why we need to, to know and understand what's going on, we gotta be. Understanding that we're in two thousand and twenty-five, we are not like in the eighties or the seventies, no more, we had to wake up. Um, the last war, a couple of years ago, we let go three of the members, when we were supposed to let go more people. Uh, with the sign of two, let's change, uh, everything that it was done as the past, and let's expect that we are two thousand and twenty-five, and we really care about those little ones. Now we have a little piece of paper, we're making them feel safe. I don't appreciate that you guys take, uh, videos of evidence of whatever is going on inside because. Where you go for us is the only way that we can see what's going internally, and, and, and the information should be free to be spread around everybody, so. Please don't take those videos, those photos, or those kids recorded, cause that's evidence for everybody, you know, like, me as a parent, I'm willing to help as much as I can. As a resident, believe me, that is nothing that I would not do for my daughters. So you guys think that there isn't anything that I, me as a parent can do for you guys? I guess I'm teaming up with all those of us, so people who are willing to work with you guys. Thank you so much for taking care of my daughters, and I love all of you guys for everything that you do, it has no price for me, thank you and good night.
Thank you, Mr. Rosas.
Um, Ivan Magalha. Um, Ivan Magaña.
If there's another card, can we move on, or can we come back to her?
Yes, Fernando Islas.
Good evening, uh, Orange Unified School District, uh, I'm a parent of this district here. Uh, I, I just come up, I come here today to, um, to put on record some, uh, parent and student sentiments that have been posted to, uh, on Instagram at parents or ERT. Um, since, uh, I, I demanded, uh, that you guys do something about your person with Ariana Rella, uh, as, um, you know, he's, he's stepping out of the office condoned by Vegas, uh, and he's issued a civilary letter, the civility letter is also conspired and condoned by Vegas. Um, but anyhow, um, you can find this on parents of ERT. Someone said, "I'm a grown adult, and I'm a victim of this horrible school and staff. The school is known for teachers and staff not giving two dams. The child is picked on. Mr. Y as well, he does not care. I would rather not deal with anything at all. I'm with whoever made this page. I wish, I wish this page was around when I was sent to this prison." Please block out my name and profile pic, but when I was attending STEAM, I had been bullied, and when we told the principal, he called me sensitive and never helped the situation. My father went to talk to him, and he called me and my father a liar. The principal has no care for his students. Let it be known, he doesn't deserve to be, to work with kids. I'm a student in grade, looks like he hasn't changed at all. Uh, the kids of the next generation are relying on safety and security. Another one. He accused me of having drugs, even when I showed him, it was mints, and had the police search my bag. It was literally mints. He's the worst person, hashtag fire him. As a previous student, he was very, fire him. That was somebody else. Fire him. Uh, is it burnt? Because that principal is a joke. Uh, they should just fire him. He's a bad person. F this guy. He doesn't deserve to teach and mentor children. Children deserve a nurturing, compassionate principal, and parents deserve to know that their kids are safe. He looks like a mental and emotional abuser. I'm so, I'm so sorry about this. Another one. I went and made a complaint on Mr. Y and Fisher on how they handled my daughter's situation, but I was told by friends and family that our Rancho District is corrupt. Everyone, everyone knows each other, and they all cover each other's ads. Uh, that's why there's no change. Um, another one. My husband has gotten into Mr. Y as well. Another one. This a-hole kicked my daughter out of that school because she was getting picked on and bullied because he didn't want to deal with the kids that were picking on my child after doing to the max. Um, um, I really don't see what the F is. This di, this district is waiting for to pull out these pathetic staff. As I'm typing this, I'm literally so mad and so emotional. To wake up every morning and to realize my baby is not there, all this could have been prevented since day one. My baby never felt safe. I've ne, I had her seven, eight, doing home studies.
Is rep published, Islas?
Now that she decided to move out of Pico Rivera District, I feel depressed. I don't know what my baby is to.
Thank you, Mr. Islas.
I don't understand what he, this kid.
Thank you, Mr. Islas.
Uh, you really should do something about it.
Thank you, sir.
This is all on record.
On your side.
Ivan Magaña.
Um, well, I'm here to address the situation that happened at Rancho High School the other day, where the kid brought out a knife. Um, what are we gonna do or what can we do to better protect the kids? What is your advice for us to protect our kids when something like this happens? Where to run? Where to go? What's the safety? Do the kids know where to, what to do in case this happens? And then also too, um, we spend a lot of money, taxpayer money, to put up trees and everything else. Can we use some of that money for metal detectors or some kind of other way to help prevent this from happening? And then also too, rumors are rumors. I don't know whether this is true or false, but apparently that child had came from another school for similar reasons to what happened at Rancho. So why are they being allowed to transfer from another school? But the history of violence, and then now our kids are now unsafe. So what can we do as parents to help the situation? Or help better protect the schools or get the word out what to do in the situations like this? So I'm just really concerned about the safety of all the kids, staff workers. I saw videos and stuff that was just about the security guard, uh, or I guess security, security. He was doing this, the kid had a knife, but why isn't he carrying a taser or something that can bring down the child? So the child is there, and the child could, won't run to everybody that's standing there and start stabbing the crowd. Well, this, this person didn't have anything. He's had his hands up, like trying to calm the situation and understand. You don't wanna hurt that child that has obviously mental problems, some kind of, uh, disabilities. But we need to be, have our security there, be able to do something. The sheriff showed up, which is great. We're right here at the store, but in the meantime, I mean, there's a, a teacher, she's telling everybody, back, everybody get back, but that's not gonna help, but the kid just starts winding around, trying to stab anyone. So that's my concern. I don't know. Um, apparently, somebody's supposed to reach out to you. Over two. So I appreciate if you can get some kind of answers or better way to advise my, you know, our kids. I advise my son, you know, because of all the guns and everything that's happening in these schools, that you don't know your surroundings, know where to get out, know where to hide. Know how to jump the fence this way. If you hear gunfire this way, get out that way. Find a place to hide. So, and then this incident happens, and that just brings back, boy, like, wow, I'm afraid to send my son to school. Every morning I tell him, watch your back. Hey, be careful. Don't be mean to nobody because you don't know who's gonna get mad and do this.
Thanks, rep, Ms. Magaña. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
And just to check, uh, I had a name here, Anthony Islas?
Uh, no, just, I don't.
You know, of these. Okay, is that everybody? Um, moving on to number twelve, labor association reports.
Hello, Board of Education, Superintendent Cabinet, and Community. My name is Alejandro Costa, I'm the president of Rancho One and Seven. Um, first, I wanna give, uh, give thanks to Mr. Matthews, um, Dr. Vegas and the board for the Jimmy Carter holiday that we had. It is in our contract when the president dies, state, or the governor, or even the board declares a state of mourning. So thank you for that. Wanna thank Mr. Cockburn for hiring a bunch of aides that we, that we needed. Um, I think there's not too many more vacancies, so I wanna thank you for that. Um, so last week we had, had some incidents last week. Uh, one was the high school. Um, we need to do something about that. Hire more security, hire more school police. I don't know, um, how much training SSOs have, but we do need it for hire more, at least more school police officers. Uh, we have a chief now, and we have three school police officers. We used to have four, uh, CCA police officers, which I think we still need. Um, we never agreed to promoting a CCA member to chief and keeping a chief and then three police officers. We do need that four police officers, so please hire that four police officers for safety. Um, we also had an incident at the adult school. Um, I was actually there when it happened. Uh, somebody came off, just came into the campus. Principal asked him to leave. He cussed her out and told him he wanna fight me. She came back in. I did walk out just to see what he was gonna do, where he was gonna go. So if he went to, to one of the classrooms, I could let them know what classroom he went to. He went to the water fountain, banged on the wall or the vending machines, and I had to say, dude, you gotta go. This is a school site. This is a school district. You need to leave. And he started cussing me out and started saying, you wanna fight me? I said, no, but you need to go. I'm sorry, but you do need to leave. And then he got real, you know, got real tough and started coming at me, so I just went back into the office. Um, started banging the door to the man, started cussing at us. We're holding the door closed because we didn't know if it was locked or not. And then he got some tape on it and broke, uh, the principal's, uh, window. And then, uh, he ended up leaving. Uh, we did, did call nine one. Uh, apparently the sheriff couldn't make it because there was another shooting down on the north end of Pico. But, uh, school police did come and assist in that. So thank you for that. Um, also in negotiations, um, we should be giving our counter office of district, uh, this week, hopefully by tomorrow. Have the doctor, I'd leave, have them send it in. Um, we really needed to look at our medical benefits, um. Our members are paying about nine hundred dollars or so, a little bit more than that, at least for the families. Uh, we really need to get that down or raise, we need to raise our, our, our cap. Um, we'd like to raise it up to the twenty, to twenty thousand. Hopefully we get that done this year. We're also dealing some language, so we're, we're, hopefully we could finish, uh, on Friday. We're supposed to be on Friday. Hopefully we can finish everything on Friday. Um, again, the job study, we have a job study that we're doing for all the classifications, and they're paid. We still need to get going on that. Uh, we're so far behind on that. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Good evening, the Rancho community. I'm the academy old president of CRT. Happy New Year to our community. I'll start on a positive note. I hope everyone had a nice holiday vacation. But I'd like to piggyback on what, piggyback on what was said by our community members and, um, my sibling over here, Alex Costa. We're very concerned about the safety. We had two breaks in one week. As you know, ERT has been bugging about better, better safety protocols. We, last year, we did meet multiple times with Dr. Vegas. I brought along our field rep, Martha Figueroa, but we haven't had any safety meetings this year. Now, honestly, I get tired of bugging when I need to hear from the soup, but sometimes he needs to call some meetings on our behalf. We've talked about the entrances of campuses. We've talked about behavior of kids. Our frustration as educators is the fact that kids have changed. And we see the kids through a lens of, of someone said, the seventies and eighties, and that has changed. When I have teachers who are crying when kids are in the second, third, fourth, fifth grade that are acting out when you don't even know that's going on, do you think, God, they're only in the fifth grade and they're behaving the way they're behaving? Our protocols, our systems are not adapting to the chronic misbehavior of the same kids. This year alone, I've spent more time helping my members get it together. And what I mean getting together, where they're crying, where they don't wanna come to work because they're dealing with the same issues and behaviors. I know we have PVS. That helps a certain group of our population. But what are we doing about the students who are chronically misbehaving? And you could go back, and they connect kids at the elementary level that are misbehaving, they cut middle school, and then they're at the high school. And I know we worry about the dashboard, but at this time, the dashboard is not keeping our kids safe. They're not keeping our, our educators safe. We averted two major accidents in one week. The staff at Robus, uh, at the adult school, the transient was throwing things. Someone could have been seriously hurt. This week at Rancho High School, we could have had a tragedy, either one of our students or one of our educators. And you know very well that I've been bugging about safety protocols as long as I've been president of this union. And we've been lucky. And I hate saying that because we shouldn't be lucky. We should be having things in place that everyone knows what the procedures are. We need to know where the kids are at. And we have kids who continue, continue to misbehave and harm adults and students. They really, we need to figure out what are we gonna do for them, that they get the help they need, take it to a place that they need, the help they need, because we've been lucky. I saw the videos too, and I always take it with a grain of salt because there's always two stories to any situation, but the multiple videos that I was sent from my colleagues is horrendous. And I grew up with a time where we had to deal with that. Those of us who have long histories in, in Pigg River, we had our problems. Don't think it's, it's been rosy. But at that time, administration really made it a policy to stop the gang violence and weapons. And we really need to revisit that. Um, the discipline part, I just had a union meeting today, and I was talking to one of my reps because I had another teacher who was crying. She said, the misbehaving. They're in elementary. And I know we don't wanna trap kids. We try to give every child a fighting chance, but if it's the same child who's misbehaving, what are we doing to help the parent and help the child try to overcome whatever issues they're having? Because it's at the, it's at the expense of our educators, and the kids in the room are trying to get some type of education. And I, and I, I really came in in a really happy mood, you know? But enough is enough. We dodged another bullet, and I hate saying that because it's true. We dodged a bullet. This other kid used another weapon, but I don't wanna use that one, but we dodged it. So, and I did talk to the soup, and we do really need, but we really need a concrete plan that everyone's on the same page. Administrators know what they need to do, educators need to do, classified, my siblings need to know what to do, because that's the only way we're gonna be able to keep, keep everyone safe. And if that's my mission for the next, next, um, two years, then that's what I'm going to do. Um, the other issue too that we need to think about because we have a new president, and yesterday he had a darn good time signing executive orders, and one of them was taken away of churches and school districts to be a sanctuary for our students who are undocumented. What plan do we have here? Because I did talk to the soup about this a while back. What plan does Rancho have for the safety of our students in terms of dealing with the government? I asked that. Where is it? Does the board members know what that plan is? If ICE comes and takes one of our kids? What happens if ICE takes one of our parents during the school day? Because it's real now, because the president signed an executive order. That's another big issue we need to think about. What protocols has the government, has, has the district put in to tell administrators that if ICE comes in, they have to have a legal signed warrant from a judge? Have we trained our administrators? Do they come on campus? Have we trained our teachers in event that this comes down? They, they, they're saying we want so and so? Because I brought it up way back when someone got elected. How much does ERT need to do to do the job? To keep our kids here, safe? Because it's now here, folks. And I know everyone has different political beliefs when it comes to immigration, but the bottom line, my duty as president, my duty as an educator is to keep every kid that comes my path safe. And I know probably most, all of you worry about our kids. He signed an executive order yesterday. So that's another comment. That's another, um, issue I'm gonna have to have with cabinet and with the suit. Because what are our plans? And that's our problem. We're always behind the ball. We're always behind. We're always behind the issue and we're scrambling. And it's always at the expense of our students and our our members. So think about that. How do we keep being every person who's on this campus safe? And then on a lighter note, um I always ask, why, uh we had a union meeting today and I always ask what's going on? Because it keeps me in touch with what's happening with my peeps and I know that at STE, the sixth grade of students went to Rojondo. They're going to Cal State LA's advert class to start to prepare for college and their choices in life. I know our decathlon kids at Rancho High School will be competing, I believe, this weekend. We wish them well, they always bring honor to Peak River. And um and I hope they continue to bring honor to Peak River and to Rancho High School. And then the last thing robotics, you know, we're being on your campus over here, North Park. I I know that the robotics teams in our district. Um North Park and STE, Mary Bear will be competing this weekend. They they always seem to bring honor to our campus too, so we wish them and their coaches much luck. But um overall, this is a good place to work, folks, and I know it'll be really hard, but at the end of the day. It's been thirty six years that I've been here and all of us, I know I've worked with all of you one time or another. But we work darn hard to keep our kids safe and our parents safe and our families safe, and let's continue, but let's be ahead of the game. Dr. Vegas, be ahead of the game. Be ahead of the game, be the leader we need to keep us safe. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Doctor Vegas, we have another um.
Yeah, no, this is also labor uh points.
Moving on to number thirteen, information, Adam's presentation on the REACH after school program.
Good evening, um I was in partnership with you at for many, many years with the district and REACH. We, I've actually known Mrs. West since I was a principal, maybe fifteen years ago back at Bernie, and we, I've seen the program develop. From servicing our elementary kids, a small group, and then the demand getting larger and larger for our kids, and they've done some very great things with our students. And both Mrs. West and yeah, are here to speak about the REACH program and what they do with our students.
Hello Superintendent, School Board, Cabinet, thank you for having us here today. Um again, my name is Candace West, I'm supervising the after school program. Um and just giving you a little bit of information about our after school program, so. No tiny right, I apologize, but we'll submit submission for you. So the REACH after school program is offered at all eight elementary sites in the around unified school district. Um from transitional kinder through fifth grade. Um it's through the Aces Grant, which is the After School Education and Safety Grant funded through the state. Um the program we're very proud of has been in operation with the collaboration of the around unified school district since, actually nineteen ninety nine. So, we're we're at twenty five year mark this year, so we're super proud of it that we've been able to provide the service to the kiddos in the after school program. This has been wild. Aligned with the Aces program goals and the district goals, we offer hands-on disguised learning through language arts, mathematics, and STEM. To support regular day instruction, we offer homework assistance, cumulative fitness uh activities and enrichment activities. Offering a range of art, technology, and life skills. So the REACH curriculum is designed using the framework of the California Quality State Standards. Outlined for the after school programs as well as the California State Standards to support academics. Through programming, participants um are provided a safe and supportive environment for learning after school, attaining skill building, and um through the different activities that we've have listed up there, um we'll get to in a minute. Um our students uh will show accomplishments in, you know, language arts, mathematics, and uh different enrichment. In the after school program, we do provide the kiddos with nutritious snack. Uh we encourage students to make healthy choices. Um we do have a wellness policy that we have implemented in our after school program to ensure that kiddos are not bringing hot cheetos and whatnot, and making better decisions when it comes to health. We do have um some of our enrichment programs, we do have culinary class that we are enriching them um on better choices and how to prepare. Um snack is also provided by the around show unified school district food services, so thank you so much. Really entertaining. On the after school program, we do provide homework assistance. Um we do one hour of homework assistance, uh tutoring, um any type of academic support that the kiddos are bringing, that they need that additional support. And then the after school program. In the after school program, we are not teaching them, we're we're not reinventing the wheel, they're getting that academic during the regular school day. What we're doing is supporting that learning that they're getting in the day. So sometimes kiddos need just a different format, a different method, different manipulatives. In order to attain that information and to better grasp those concepts, and all of our staff have been trained in order to provide them with that assistance. Um our physical fitness, um we just don't do outdoor recreation, you know, free play outside. We do run a curriculum, it's called it's called Spark, or it is a cumulative physical fitness activity. Um where the kiddos are learning and building upon a a skill set. And then uh progressively going on so they can really attain that skill set, so. We're super proud, we noticed a lot of our kiddos that were here today and receiving those awards and say, hey, hey, we recognize them, so it's pretty cool to see that. Um we do do thirty minutes of organized activity, as I said before, we're again a focus on skill building, muscle development, and an opportunity to stay healthy and active. Um our lit our program is also designed around literacy. Um we do utilize the Litart curriculum uh via Global Learning. Um which is a great program that helps improve English language and gauge students um. But the kids are leading the activity, so what we want them to do is they're gonna guide it once they they've attained that understanding. Um it promotes theater and encourages youth voice and leadership. Well, being exposed to rich text via picture books and novels, journal writing, vocabulary, and art based on their text.
Uh I'll be talking about a little bit more uh specific uh activities that we do uh in the after school program. Uh one of the things that the REACH program provides students is different opportunities to explore new interests. And build upon their skills that they might already have, which is build on that. Uh this is accomplished through our enrichment uh activities that we do. Uh one of them is dance uh recital. Uh the REACH uh spring recital is a culmination of the hard work that students and staff uh have during an eight week uh club course. During those eight weeks, uh students and staff work together to come up with uh different uh recital dances, different moves, different um uh choreography that they put together, they learn the lyrics of a certain song. And then at the end of those eight weeks, we pull them all together and they present uh what they've learned to uh family and faculty as well. Um this year uh is gonna be our nineteenth recital, and the theme for this year is uh disco, so that one should be pretty fun. Um our next one that we have, which is one of our uh more popular ones for the students, because not only do they get to eat. Uh they get to uh explore new uh recipes, new um uh fruits, vegetables, be exposed into new things like that. Um where normally they might not be able to uh or never been exposed to that. And so it kind of opens up their mind to kind of try different things uh in terms of culinary. So our culinary club provides an opportunity for students um to engage in learning uh through cooking. Uh we use math and science, and they're embedded in the culinary lesson from measuring portions to a deep dive. And to what it takes to bring the food from a farm to their table. Uh culinary club is rebound each year, uh making sure that lessons are tailored to a specific grade level. So the club, um if if it's gonna be the lower grades that are doing it, we kind of pick recipes and tailor it to that. If it's gonna be for an upper grade, because each year we change it up, uh it'll be tailored to that upper grade where it's more science and math-based uh recipes. Um our next one that we have is uh intramural sports. Uh it's a big part of the REACH program. Uh we've hosted competitions and events between all eight elementaries uh through soccer, uh we bring everybody together. And we've done soccer, we've done ultimate frisbee, uh we've done track and field, um and we've done quite a few, we've done tennis. Uh and then one of the the bigger events that has kind of become a staple for the REACH program is the REACH Mini Olympics. Uh the students train in their qualified events. And we host an opening ceremony where the students present a cheer for their school and compete in events like shot put, relay races. Archery and other events. Uh families and faculty are invited to turn on their school and show support during that time. Uh this one, uh we also like to um correlate uh being uh leaders in their field. And then also building that self-confidence because one, they're competing against all the other schools and they have their family there, and they just kind of uh brings that uh self-confidence to them as well. Uh the next one is theater, uh in theater club, uh REACH students learn what it takes to put on a play from beginning to end. Uh it's not necessarily just, we're gonna learn um these lines and then present it. Uh they get to uh pick the costumes, do the background, the backdrops. Uh they spe- they pick uh stagehands, learn their lines, so it's not the staff doing it, it's the students doing it. Uh one of the things that we mentioned uh before was uh student leadership, which we'll talk about a little bit. It it kind of, it promotes them to be uh more involved in everything that they do rather than the staff kind of doing it for them. It's, we're putting them in those positions to to become leaders as well. Um one of the things that we we do every year as well is we do field trips. Um we we like to consider them uh educational field trips. Uh because the students uh have that as a culmination of their weekly lessons. So, uh one of the filters we are gonna be taking in February. Uh each site is kind of uh controlling what field trips they go to based on uh student input as well. And so they do uh around the week course. Um or five lessons depending on how they break it up. And when they go through their lessons, they're being exposed to the uh new ideas, new things that they're gonna see in their field trip. So when they study all that and then they go to the field trip, they see uh, oh, this is what uh the solar system was looking like. One of the things that they're gonna go see is um the cube uh in Anaheim, I believe. Um it's gonna be space exploration, so that's gonna be a lot of uh new uh things for them. And so when they learn it at the site, uh they'll be able to kind of make those connection connections between uh what they learned at the site and then what they're gonna go see uh in person. Um another part of our uh curriculum is box cards and one I Jax. Uh so box cards and one I Jax is a part of our math curriculum series that helps students improve their math skills using manipulatives. Um and then also box cards and one I Jax is uh uses disguised learning to reinforce the regular school day uh instr- uh instruction and is aligned to the state standards. So like Hannah said before, we don't reteach everything that uh they've already been taught. Um it's a quick activity that they do that uses disguised learning, where they're actually having fun and playing games with uh dice to learn um greater than or equal to, less than, um cards to do multiplication, division. Uh place values, decimals, so they're playing a game while they're out also learning, so. We like to uh have that uh disguised learning there as well. Uh the next one we have is uh the youth voice and leadership. Uh which is an after school uh building block for quality uh programming. Uh in REACH, it is one standard that we fully implement as part of our vision statement. We want our students to gain a sense of personal achievement and confidence through leadership. Uh as I already mentioned before, a lot of different um uh activities that they do to do that. But we also have uh youth voice and leadership in the REACH program, ranges from classroom helpers uh like door monitors, line leaders. We get them even from like TK Kinder, they all kind of want to be the leader of the line, so it kind of gets them to to start feeling that way. Uh all the way up to student council that has uh shape ideas and activities at each site. Um so we recently had uh our winter shows across all eight schools. And some of the student council kids, they're running the show pretty much completely. A lot of the times it was uh our staff that would greet the parents, uh call up the next show, do all that. This is completely student ran, uh we had students doing uh the curtains, we had students uh presenting the next class. Uh telling everybody what the next uh song was, so that's basically what we want to do is have a program where the kids feel comfortable enough. And have that self-confidence kind of run the show. Uh a quicker note on our grant renewal process, uh every three years, uh it's a three-year cycle for the grant. Um it outlines the the program expectation, or we we provide a plan that outlines the program expectations and implementations. And we provide that to the state, uh once it's, if it's approved by the state, we would secure funding for the next three years. And it's a program plan that we give uh to the state and then they revise it. Uh currently, we have secured funding for until uh the year twenty twenty seven, which will go up again, uh provide a new rebound uh program plan and then uh submit it to the state again uh to get more money. And then just a quick organizational chart, um we have academic coaches. Uh which are uh regular school day teachers that are sort of kind of our like liaison between the program um and the school, in case there's any issues, we always kind of help have them go uh through us and uh figure out issues that we could improve the program with. Uh each site has a site coordinator, uh one per site, and then classroom leaders, depending on how many students we have. Uh we'll be having one for every twenty students. And then lastly, um we have our management team, which is James Laura, our recreation manager, Candace West, our supervisor. And then myself as the program coordinator.
Thank you so much for the presentation, we're gonna open it up to the board for um any questions you should have, um starting over here with Tracy Perez.
Hi, thank you for the presentation, um great programming. Uh the the leader skills, the team player skills, uh they call them soft skills, right, that is so critical in the job market. Because they can learn to do the basics, math, English, but if they don't have those soft skills or team player skills, then doesn't matter, right? Um so thank you, thank you for that. My one question, um so back on page two, it says the shared goal, the city of North Park, here you see.
So to answer my question, it's it's so that the it's so that our participants in the after school program have that confidence to be able to, you know, be at school, so with a lot of our our students, they're English language learners, and you see them struggling. Um so when we get them up and they're uh participating in a non-threatening environment where they're able to do like in the theater aspect. We see that they're more comfortable with with reading, we see that they're more comfortable with vocabulary, we're exposing them to that. Um as far as a benchmark guide, um we do uh coordinate with the global learning with our Litart uh program. That comes out and does surveys to see like how our our kiddos are are ranging. It it'd be fantastic if we had them from, you know, unfortunately, it's like whenever the kiddo start the program. Additionally, um we do meet with um the principals, regular school day teachers. If uh kiddos are struggling with a certain topic area, that becomes our focus. That's where we'll go in the most skills to make sure that we provide them that's academic support.
Could you mind later, um if you could share with maybe Dr. Vegas or uh Miss Castignon the the results from the benchmark? Um that'd be helpful for us to just kind of see where where they're at. Uh because one of the biggest things that I see in in the after school programs is how do we measure? It's hard to measure, I get that, absolutely, how do we measure even like the basics, like if if you're seeing that they're increasing their reading, we can measure that by you know, whatever tool we have in place, um do you want to ask me something?
I think sometimes with our partnerships, it's hard to attribute their participation in the after school program because there's so many different interventions that are happening throughout the school day. Intervention tutoring that they're being pulled out when there's full site tutoring that they work with the students. But what we're hoping to do is that the variety of programs that they offer within the REACH program, like the cooking, the sports, the theater, the students get exposed to that area and build the confidence to want to come to school, so they're more engaged and participate. So we'll be able to see the academic performance in school by turning in their homework on time where they're having difficulty and don't understand it, they get that support. So I'm hoping that our partnership and the after school programs give the students the confidence and for them to feel comfortable to be engaged and participate in those programs, so it's kind of hard for us to. So it's kind of hard for us to say, because they participated in the REACH program, they increased reading X amount of levels. But we're hoping to say they feel engaged in school. There's areas in schools, there's different adults and students that they could connect with at a different level.
Yeah, and I'm hoping maybe the the global learning survey has it, because you can ask the kid, right? How do you feel about math? Because, you know, so just kind of that that would be helpful if it's okay with the part, some of that feedback, how how do they feel, right? Because if they're engaged in this program, great, you know, and I'm not saying they're not, but it's it's some data that we have to work with. And I know, you know, one of the recommendations, I know we, I don't know if it's elementary, but we have iReady now. iReady is a great resource of, you know, I don't know if it's at the elementary level yet.
Remember, we're piloting the iReady right now, and that's more for the instruction in the country.
Yes, yes. I see a lot of other districts, they use iReady, so if they don't need help with homework, that's a great reinforcement that they can use. Yeah, but thank you, thank you, thank you. It sounds like a great program. And I I need to visit one day, and if you could please just share the the results with the global learning. Thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you, Tracy Savage.
I don't have any, actually, that was one of my questions, just how do you engage that? But I just want to say thank you to the REACH program and the partnership they do have with the city because there's a lot of parents that work and they, it's just those two hours are so vital and so crucial. And I've seen so many kids go through the REACH program that their confidence, they are it, I mean, the level that they gain, their autonomy is like, you don't even recognize the kid by the time winter comes around and these performances are there. And they're all looking forward to the REACH Mini Olympics. Shout out to my niece who won the cup stacking one year. But it's it's just incredible to see these kids, how they blossom in these programs. So thanks.
So we're cup stacking and playing cards, is what you're telling me. Thank you. Tracy, again?
Thank you. Mrs. West and Tramila, thank you for the presentation. I'm a huge fan of REACH. All of my five kids went through the program and fun fact, my oldest daughter, she was exposed a lot to art at Oberon Elementary. And when she was little, she said, I'm going to be, I'm going to major in art. She wasn't able to take any classes later on, but she majored in art and I, you know, attribute that to her exposure at REACH. And just, you know, hearing about all the new things that you have now, you've expanded and evolved. It's it's great because it's it's more more opportunities for our students and yeah, you know, when you mentioned that, oh, I know that student, I know that student, it's true. You know our kids. When we would see staff at city events, they would know my daughter by name. And that's just that type of connection that you have with this program, which I really appreciate. And just my only ask would be, if you let us know when when you have a recital and when you have the mini Olympics, would love to show up and support. Thank you again.
Thank you. Tracy, the part.
Well, thank you very much for the comprehensive presentation and explanation and each of the programmatic. Did you just tell her I'm in after-school programs? Full disclosure, this is what I do for a living. So I do have just a couple of different types of questions in terms of the the programming, is it, is it the same throughout all the sites in terms of timing and execution? It isn't very.
If it varies, it would vary because we are collaborating with the actual school site. And they may have additional instructional activities that they're doing in the after-school program. So that it provides those kids in the REACH program that opportunity to participate in that as well. So we will manipulate like what type we'll do, like homework assistance or something of that nature, like timeframe wise. But across curriculum wise, all eight schools are being exposed to the same curriculum. It might be manipulated based upon, again, the school site. So maybe like Southridge or Du Language Academy, whether it be manipulated.
And and the surveys, what what type of questions are being asked? Is it social, emotional? Is it learning? Is it feeling supported, feeling safe?
So e- every year, at the end of the year, our our students are provided a survey, again, yes, social, emotional, based upon academics, what they feel like they need additional support on. We also really want their feedback on what they want to see for next year. We've said it before, it's ever a new program, we wanted to keep moving, so we hit those areas as well. We also do a parent survey. We have, we actually have a pro-parent organization, so it's like the parent REACH organization. We'll meet quarterly, so there's one representative from every school site that, you know, their kiddos are participating in the after-school program. So they provide us with a lot of information and support, like what they want to see, just what's happening in out there in the universe, if you will, you know what I mean, it's what they want to see in the after-school program.
Yeah, I appreciate that because you answered my question about parent engagement, and so you're you're getting their their feedback as well. And the youth voice piece is critical. How about in terms of attendance? How how are we doing at each site, like in terms of ADA to fulfill the requirements of of the ACES grant?
So we definitely took a hit during COVID. We were able to provide probably about sixty percent of our attendance during COVID. We still had kids logging on online. We still are providing support for parents, just, you know, navigating that, you know, that aspect of that that turned our world upside down. Coming back from COVID, we found that there was a lot of parents that decided to keep their kids home from, you know, after school. They just, a lot of parents were working from home, so we saw like a huge influx in that change. Though we promote like crazy, we are probably at about seventy-five to eighty percent attendance at all of our sites where we would like to be. Of course, we want to reach for that one hundred goal. We're talking, it was just from it all back with Rivera, I think, had like a hundred and thirty kiddos. Right now, we're at about eighty at Rivera. So we definitely saw that there was a difference. But additionally, with the the funding of ELOP funding, that's providing that additional support, a different type of support as well. It's given parents options to kind of choose. So not that it's like competitive, but it's it's kind of like, it's it's another option for parents, which is a great thing because that hasn't always been the case. So we do see that there is the a attendance differential, if you will, be clear about her, so.
I mean, the the numbers sound robust, though. I I know the targets, you won't have everybody, right? So absolutely, that, yeah, they they do sound robust. Last question on on the the ELOP, because I was going to ask if we're subsidizing enrichment for REACH, or is, it sounds like it's more like, it's a completely separate?
Right. We are keeping it separate. We're not I think it's called when we're not sharing the cost with it, so we're not supplying them at all. They're doing REACH through ACES and we're doing other programs with the ELOP funding.
Thank you. Those are all my questions. Appreciate everything that you're doing for our kids. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mrs. Candace West, thank you for the presentation. I had full disclosure, I worked with Candace when I volunteered for the city. I know you're doing a great job and I know you're the right person for this. I don't know how long it's been, but I I don't, I probably said nothing but great things about you, so. Thank you so much for what you're doing. The presentation was great. And and just to reiterate some of this stuff, you know, teaching our kids leadership skills, self-confidence, learning how to play well with other social skills. A lot of that stuff, I guarantee you, a lot of these kids that were here today went through that REACH program and and the success goes on and it shows, the after-school program. So thank you for what you're doing. As as a district, what can we do to help, number one, increase the numbers or just to get the word out to help increase the the attendance to get you to that, those those higher levels as far as the percentages are are concerned? If there's anything that we can do, we can recommend that we can do to help as a district. But aside from that, I don't have any other questions. If you want, just go with that one and then again, thank you so much for everything.
Well, I only to say on behalf of the, this could, you could, it's always been super supportive. I know that I can contact anyone who says it was amazing. Dora reaches out with students that find that interest that they need to be in the after-school program. The principals are very quick to call, so, I mean, we're doing it. We're we're a team. That's why it's all about collaboration as a city and after, as the school district. Just, I don't know, it's the day and age of of technology. If you just want to put out some Instagram blast, email blast for us, like to help it out. Information, it's just informing parents of the different opportunities that are out there and the different activities that we have to offer. I know that we do it on our end as a city, but if we have the school district in it as well, I mean, more the merrier, right? They get information. Thank you so much.
Thank you again, and and that phrase, you disguise learning, and I love it. That's that's great. Disguise learning, they're very good without even knowing that they're very, so I'll say. Thank you so much again.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to move on to IDV presentation of the Abbott Excel program for North Park Academy of the Arts.
Good evenings, Colored Board, community members, cabinet. It's my great honor to introduce Dr. Kimes and Ms. Law, the from North Park Academy of the Arts. Tonight, they wanted to share with you a little bit about the Abbott Excel program. It's something we've been doing for the last two years. It's a three-year process to fully implement. They will share details, but they really just wanted you to learn a little bit more about the program and how we're continuing to provide new opportunities to support our English learners.
Good evening, President Contreras, members of the board, Dr. Vegas, members of Cabinet, and the Lren Show Speaker of our community. As Ms. Chavez Diaz shared with you, we are going to be talking a little bit about Abbott Excel, which is our ELDC structured English language class as well as our overall information on our ELD program. So before we dive too much into what Abbott Excel is, I did want to go over a little bit of demographic data with you. If you look up here, we do have four years of data from when we came back to COVID. That first column is the number of EL students on average in the district at the middle school level. So total EL students in elementary unified at middle school divided by the three middle schools. And then you'll see our number of EL students and then you'll see the percentage of our student body that our EL students represent. As you can see, we have consistently had higher numbers of EL students than the other two middle schools in the district average, which is part of the reason why we decided to start with the EL, the three-year pilot at our school site. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Laura to talk about what Abbott Excel actually looks like in the next year.
Hi, so the ELD program at North Park has evolved over the years. So starting looking back at our return from COVID, at that time, we had our classes structured by grade level instead of by language ability. So we were looking at the limited data that we had since we've been away on distance learning. We didn't have access to as much data as we did previously. And we started to identify the needs of our English learners and realized that our classes needed to be restructured. So in collaboration with Dr. Kimes and Ms. Chavez Diaz, myself, we decided to level the classes by language ability for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. We also started conversations with Carmen Lopez, our district Abbott coordinator. In last school year, we had our classes leveled, twenty-two, twenty-three, sorry, we leveled our classes. And then we started to look at how could we support our LTL, our long-term English learners? And Abbott has a program called Abbott Excel, which is designed to support those students in accelerating their language acquisition while also giving them opportunities for that other Abbott students have that aren't English language learners. In the twenty-three, twenty, that summer, we decided we were going to implement it and we sent a site team to an Abbott training to become familiar with the program. And in twenty-three, twenty-four, we piloted it with a very small group of seventh grade students. They were our seventh grade ELDC students, so students who are closest to reclassification. And that following summer, Dr. Kimes, Ms. Barianzo is our counselor, myself attended the Abbott Institute to learn how to implement scholar groups, which is one of the components of Abbott Excel. And then this year, we expanded to a larger group, inviting all of our ELDC sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students participate in the program. So Abbott Excel is a branch of the Abbott program. It's also a structured ELD program. The main difference between it and an Abbott class is that instead of tutorials, students participate in a scholar group. I know you're soon to speak about those in a few minutes. They get to build leadership skills and it puts them on a pathway to an Alabamian trip, hopefully, in high school. This is designed specifically for those school students. Okay, so these are just some of the things you would see in an Abbott classroom, an Abbott Excel classroom, very similar things that you would see to an Abbott classroom. In addition, we continue to implement the LPAC Academy, which is part of the district. All ELD students participate in that. But we do EL monitoring, we set goals and work on other skills like organization and routines. Here are some pictures of costume and there's a video linked in here of some students talking about it.
My everything, I thought a lot of you think, things that we would every week. For example, on Monday, we always do four of the weeks for when we have to think about what it means, write about it and show a response. Then it is now we think about Thursday, where we have to work together and talk, pray and hear a lot of it. Friday, even for Friday, I do that helps us to get to know each other and others that's in. Vice members on Friday, I do so far as talking with other people coming to the country.
In Abbott, so we do a lot of research and something changes. We are learning about focusing on teaching. If you want to do some, we get courses and we can use your path. Focus on if you have to build up my reading skills, eating skills, and moving skills. Focus on taking help, see also that they are doing now for our practice and helping to them. And and teaching to my great.
All students read it, read it. It came through on that video. I do want to talk a little bit about the data from Abbott Excel. I have up here the reclassification criteria. This is the district reclassification criteria for grade six through eight. In order for a student to reclassify out of ELD, they need to have an overall LPAC score of a four. They need to have a demonstration of basic skills, which can be met through the SBACK, through the interims, or through the star reading assessments. And they have to have a C or higher on their, in their final semester report cards in their English Language Arts class. So with that in mind, the next slide shows you the LPAC scores from the twenty-two, twenty-three school year and the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Something to keep in mind about LPAC data that's a little bit different from what we traditionally look for on SBACK data is that as soon as our students reclassify out, they stop taking the test. And so we expect to see like an up and down wave of our scores because our top students are testing out of ELD. And so we keep, we see kind of like a growth every year. We're kind of starting over with new students each year when we're looking at the test. Last year, for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, we had three newcomers enrolled throughout the course of the year, which represented two countries. This year, we had ten new, or sorry, last year, we had ten newcomers who enrolled representing eight countries. That's over the course of the year and three languages. So far this year, we have fifteen newcomers total, four of whom have enrolled just this school year. So also looking at the number of newcomers we have in our program impacts the scores as well. And then looking specifically at our Abbott Excel data, from the Abbott Excel pilot class last year from year one, sixty-two percent of the class reclassified and moved out of the ELD program. It was a seventh grade only class. Fifteen percent of the class moved from a level two to a level three on the LPAC. Fifteen percent moved from a low level three to a high level three. And we did have one student who was within the level one, he's moved into ELDB for this year because we felt like he needed more support. But you can see that every single student in our Abbott Excel class last year showed tremendous growth. And then looking really quickly at our reclassification data. And then looking really quickly at our reclassification data, again, this goes back to four years. It has the number of EL students, um, and then the our reclassification numbers as well as our district reclassification numbers. Twenty-one, twenty-two, we knew it was going to be high because we were capturing the kids who were out during COVID. Twenty-two, twenty-three was the year that we changed our structure, and we leveled by ability and language proficiency instead of by grade. And then twenty-three, twenty-four was our pilot year of Avid Excel. This year, so far, we've reclassified six students, and we see several more on the horizon. So we're excited about what Avid Excel has to offer our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kimes, Ms. Laura, and Ms. Chaz, um Jasmine Chaz Diaz. I appreciate the presentation. I would now open it up to questions from the board, starting with Tracy Price.
Wow, uh, the reclassifications score is huge. So it is, you're doing something right. So thank you, the kudos to your entire team for doing that. I I am a little um confused on, so how does a student qualify, I guess you could say, for Avid? I I wasn't sure if that's, is is that the scores of, uh, I would.
So for Avid Excel, um, because Avid Excel is designated for ELD, it's a little bit different process than traditional Avid. And um Ms. Laura is actually both our English Language Point Contact teacher and our Avid Coordinator. So she has her her patent both in those arenas, which is awesome. Um, but for Avid Excel, we look really at our L T L, which are our long-term English learners, who are students who have been a designated English language learner for five to seven years. So we're looking primarily at that as opposed to like the application-based data that we do for for a traditional Avid student. So all of our Avids, or all of our ELD C students are enrolled in Avid Excel. Parents are given the option to have the traditional ELD C curriculum, but none of our parents opted for that. So all of our ELD C students are in Avid Excel.
God, I love that. I like the equity piece. And that's it, because like, from what I remember of Avid, you had to have a certain degree. And so that that was, I was an EL learner, and then back then, they did not, I didn't qualify for Avid because of my English. And so that's why I love the equity piece, the fact that these students are getting those skills, and it's showing in the data that they're reclassifying. Um, I just, I'm just in awe, um, but okay.
Yeah, one of the things about Avid Excel is that they're part of the Avid family. So when Avid classes take field trips, they go on the field trips too. So when we go to Cal State LA, we go on, um, with your college. When we went to UCLA, I'm going to College Fair last year. We went to a tech empowerment day. Our Avid Excel kids get to go on those those trips too. We get T-shirts, sweatshirts, they give them too, they're part of the Avid family. So it definitely helps create equity.
No, I love, and I hope, um, Dr. Gray, I feel like this is a future like presentation conference, like the reclassification rates and what you're doing. I would love to share that with like other districts and just to showcase that if you're comfortable. Um, so just thank you, thank you for this, and just amazing, Laura, thank you.
Thank you, um, Tracy Serrero.
So these students, the ones that are, I guess, ninth graders, not the the ones that were seventh graders, did they just roll into a lot of a Muslim?
They're current eighth graders with us. They were seventh graders last year, so they're current eighth graders.
Oh, listen.
So when they reclassify out of Avid, uh, when they reclassify, they have the option of which elective they want to take. And so at that point, we we try to first have to take the Avid elective for their grade level, which the majority of them do. Uh, but you you can speak more about this too, um, because I'm very proud of them.
So uh, we just had four students reclassify when semester report cards came off. Uh, the LPAC only happens once a year, right around state testing. So they have to meet that marker at that time, but sometimes they aren't all prepared to reclassify right away. Like they didn't meet the um interim benchmark, or they didn't have the grade on the report card. So I had um three, four kids who were in that situation, and they all reclassified at the semester. So they they met all the other benchmarks. And one of them was a sixth grader, and she chose to go into an elective, but the other three chose to stay in Avid Excel. And as we're working on the LPAC Academy right now, they're working on the same project that my seventh-grade Avid class is also working on, doing college and um college research, prepare for like a college career readiness unit. So they they had other options, and they chose to stay in also. I see them as future Avid students. Thanks.
Okay, Tracy McGinn.
Thank you so much for the presentation and for pivoting as well, because you, something wasn't working, and then you pivoted to doing viability. I think that that was very impactful. Um, so the program is only at North Park, if I'm not mistaken. I I think it's needed at the other middle schools as well.
So I think, and Ms. Chavez Diaz might want to speak to us also, but because it's a three-year implementation cycle, I think the plan was to kind of roll it out. There's three different years of training that we go to at Avid Summer Institute. Each each year's training is a little bit different and kind of nuanced to what we're our implementation point. So I think the long-term plan was to see the pilot through the first initial three years and then and reexamine what's going on at the district level.
Yes, exactly. We wanted to make sure we have full implementation.
Can you, can you, and so, um, to the question?
We wanted to make sure that we have full implementation, and either the program worked for our kids before we spent money on other sites and asked teachers to give up their summer to attend these instances too, because they are away from their families for about a week to to attend. We picked North Park because it has the highest EL population. Um, it, everything looks good. I I don't see anything changing, but we wanted to make sure that not only had we fully moved into the program, but then North Park can serve as mentors to the other two schools of this is how we did it. These are, this is what we would have done differently, because it will work really well.
One, one of the greatest benefits of this program is that students actually get a piece of like would be an elective. The students that are EL students at the middle school don't don't have an elective, that's the ELD class. So this satisfies the opportunity for students to get their ELD requirement, yet also it's basically an elective because we're teaching the strategy and skills that they would get in the Avid. All right, so it's a, it's a really good program. I think that now that we see the the data results, you know, we 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 have to look for ways how we can continue to implement it district-wide.
Can remind me again with the funding sources, um, with, was it, um?
So we've had um different funding sources, but two that we can consistently rely on is Title III, it's a little program, but also in our S M C. If you look at our LPAC, there's a line item that talks about um incentive and rich opportunities for English learners. And under that, we do have Avid Excel. So in terms of funding, because S M C is directly um supporting English learners as one of the three U P P groups, we have the funding to support implementation at the other two sites.
And definitely, we're we're going to be moving this up, the SAR city. And English learners are, that need additional support. So I'm really happy with the results, and hopefully we'll be able to implement them at the other sides um soon. Thank you.
And the other other comment I would make is that the initial investment to start this program, it does require a full-site team. I think we had to send like nine or ten people as opposed to the three that we normally send. So that was another piece of making sure before we invest that time and and money, quite frankly, um, in sending that many people to the conferences over summer, that it was something that was sustainable and something that worked for our kids.
Thank you, Tracy DeFargo.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I mean, it was so comprehensive that I was having a hard time coming up with a question. And then my colleagues took took the questions, but providing the data, having the students tell the story, and then just your leadership and execution of 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 the program is amazing, and the results speak for themselves. So just a big round of applause for you for for that hard work. And I guess the only question I could come up with, did you have all the resources you needed to execute the program with the funding that was available?
I I definitely feel like we did. Um, Ms. Chavez Diaz has been very supportive, and Ms. Lucas, our regional coordinator for Avid, has been very supportive. We would get a site visited at another school before we implemented it for ourselves. So we kind of had an idea of what things we needed, and since Ms. Laura is also our Avid coordinator, a lot of the Avid tools that we already had transferred over. But I feel like we've been in really good shape as far as the materials, the training, everything that we do.
That's great. Thank you for leading the way. Well done.
Thank you. Was that, um, thank you for the presentation, first and foremost. Um, was that the uh video you showed from Paramount, I believe? Was that Paramount, uh, School District? There was a video that was attached? No? Yes.
By, by students.
Oh, okay, okay, for for some reason, I recall Paramount School District.
Site visit.
Okay.
But yeah, that video that you saw tonight, that was.
Yes, yes, I did recognize your name, but I I, for some reason, I recalled seeing another video with little uh some other kids in there. But nonetheless, you're doing a great job. It's awesome. It's like, we're getting ready, we're getting our kids at the middle school level, ready for college. And that's what we talked about as as a board in in previous um uh meetings, as far as we need to connect with them at an earlier um age, you know, not just get them at at high school, obviously, but start with them at the at the middle school level and and, you know, go back as much as we can. But this is a great program, and I do see it, you know, going out to the other uh middle school students. So thank you so much for what you're doing. I appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, so moving on to um I F C, Presentation of a Rancho Unified School District, twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, Annual Financial Audit Report for the Fiscal Year Ending June twen- uh, June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four, to the Board of Education by Ms. Monique Monzo and Christie White, the operator.
All right, um, good evening, um, Superintendent, members of the Board and Cabinet. Thank you for having me here. Again, my name is Monique Manzo, Supervisor with Christie White. Um, I'd like to start off with a little overview of the audit process and our procedures, and end with our opinions over the district's financial statements, as well as federal and state awards. Um, our audit covers a broad range of testing areas, you know, completed throughout the year. During the interim phase, which occurs during spring, uh, we're more focused on um internal controls and state compliance. Um, so we test the district's design and effectiveness of internal controls um implementing over the financial reporting process. Um, so we're looking at many transactions from purchasing, accounts payable, um, your cash receiving and payroll. Um, so we're looking at, you know, all areas of fiscal there. Um, and then with with state compliance, we complete the audit procedures outlined within the annual L E A State Audit Guide that are applicable to your district. Uh, this includes areas such as attendance, instructional minutes. Uh, we look at your ASIS program, ELO, um, and we do look at your SAR, and much more. For twenty-three, twenty-four school year, new programs both at the district level and the audit level were propositioned as well as the expanded learning opportunities program. So again, ELO. Because the district expended more than seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand in federal funds, we were required to conduct a single audit. So this year, we looked at the Education Stabilization Fund Program, which is your S R and G R funds. Um, and then in the fall, we revisit the district um after you all approved the un-audited actuals. And here, we're really focused on account balances as of June thirtieth. So again, looking at your ending cash balance, accounts receivable, accounts payable, um, looking at, you know, capital assets, long-term debt, as well as um selecting a sample of revenue and expenditures. As far as audit responsibilities, who's responsible for what? Uh, district's management is responsible, responsible for the design and implementation of effective internal controls over uh your financial processes, as well as a preparation and fair presentation of financial statements. Um, the auditor, us, our responsibility is to obtain reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free from material misstatement, as well as issuing those audit opinions. Um, and just to state, our opinion does not address the financial condition of the district. Uh, for twenty-three, twenty-four year, there was a restatement of prior year net position and fund balance. Um, so the restatement was to the general fund, your student activity fund, so that's your A H P accounts, the bond interest and redemption fund. Uh, the restatement was related to, or restatements were related to clearing carryover balances um and properly reflect um their student account balances. On page eighty-six of the printed audit report, um, there's this nice little table that everyone always goes to. Um, it it summarizes the audit opinions as well as the audit results. Um, so again, your financial statements, federal and state awards. So the first audit opinion we issued was uh related to financial statements. We issued an unmodified opinion, which is the best audit opinion you can get. So congratulations on that. Um, there were no material misstatements or significant deficiencies noted this year, meaning there were no findings. Um, federal works, again, we looked at the um S R and G R program this year. Another unmodified opinion there. No significant deficiencies or material weaknesses were identified while testing. Um, state compliance, um, another unmodified opinion, and no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies were noted there. Um, however, we did report one finding. So that finding that was reported is related to the classroom teacher salaries. So we are required to verify that the, that a unified school district expends a minimum of fifty-five percent of its expenditures on um salaries of classroom teachers. So what happened in twenty-three, twenty-four is that only fifty-one point zero eight was spent on classroom teacher salaries. Uh, so this had an overall effect, um, and question cause cost of approximately four-point-nine million. Um, this has has been kind of a common issue with districts, um, especially with those one-time COVID funds. Um, so we've noticed a lot of districts kind of struggling to meet that percentage requirement. And we're hopeful that that will, you know, fall off twenty-four, twenty-five year with with those funds, funds coming to an end. And I do apologize for how this PowerPoint came out. Uh, status of prior year findings. Um, so it looks like last year, there was a finding related to your financial statement. So that was um the preparation and audit adjustments there. Um, we saw that that was implemented. There was no findings this year. Um, finding number two, again, was related to that classroom teacher salary. So again, that's been a common finding um for most districts. Um, so uh update on that, not implemented to repeat finding this year. Or twenty-three, twenty-four year, I should say. Um, that concludes my summary of the twenty-three, twenty-four financial audit for your district. Um, and it's, this was our first year auditing on your district. So it was a pleasure working with um Gio, Lily, Laura, and the whole fiscal team as well. I want to say the personnel of the sites, because we do look at attendance at the site level, and you know, those site attendance clerks are are definitely providing information. So just want to say thank you to everyone, anyone who was a part of the audit. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Any questions from the board? We'll start over here with uh Tracy Price.
I love the presentation because it was simple, short, and to the right. Um, so thank you for that, and thank you for, um, so I was looking at the the finding. Thank you for explaining the reason, right? Because COVID went to funding, and knowing that we're in the norm, everyone's doing. So thank you to our team, thank you to making it happen. Um, so I have no comments, just to kudos to our team, and thank you.
Tracy Serrero? Chris McGinn?
Yes, thank you. So uh, thank you for the presentation. Going back to that finding, though, um, I noticed on the back, it's uh, there's, there's a recommendation um regarding uh getting an exemption from the from NACO. So I I maybe the question is for uh towards Ms. Hamburg. So is there, should there be a plan in place for for things like this? And if so, like, what's, what's the next course of action?
We are working on the waiver. We plan on submitting that to the county, and it will be presented to the board prior to submitting to the.
Um, so also a plan so that we hit the fifty-five, that that it's always been fifty-five. We don't, what what can we do besides the waiver? Also have, have you monitor that fifty-five percent? So if, so we don't have that the finding there.
Yes, and it is based on those one-time dollars. So we're trying to make sure that we capture all of our salaries for our certificate team, and we back out any resources that are subject to only to supplies and services. So we can, um, what is it called? It's on column four, I'm sorry, it's.
We're done.
Exemption. We can exempt those resources as long as it doesn't have any certificated salaries tied to it. So we're going to take, we didn't have any for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, but as we back out all the COVID dollars, because those are no, no longer available, we will then look at those additional resources that are only for the fours, fives, and sixes that are already, are that are not already exempt through the class, classroom exemption allocation.
Okay, so that there'll be like um something to track it, that'll be like a running total or something that you could run and see where we're at at a certain period.
Um, yes, I believe we can do that. I believe we can run some labor reports to see what the projected cost of salaries for the certificated team and see what we have as our one-time dollars that aren't already backed out. A good example would be the Learning Recovery Emergency Block Grant. We don't plan on using any of those dollars at this point for any certificated salaries. It's mostly for services and supplies for the students. So we can actually back those dollars out.
Hi, thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy DeFargo.
Yeah, thank you very much for the the presentation. Uh, just to build on the question that Tracy McGinn had, what what are the consequences of this finding? What does it mean for the district? Since we haven't, since we've had, uh, we've had it for two years already?
It seems that way. I'm I'm not sure how far back it goes. Um, and to be honest, I've never really seen what the implications are. never really seen what the implications are. Uh, most of the time I've seen that those um exemptions or those waivers that have been filed with the um C O Es have been approved. Uh, I could definitely get some more information for you, though.
Yeah, I was just curious if there's corrective action we have to take, we have to submit to.
Typically, I've just seen recommendations to submit that um exemption waiver.
Okay. Uh, there's a conditional.
I apologize. No, um, yes, we did submit the waiver and this is our second year having that um finding. Uh, because we did not have the COVID dollars prior to that. So it was just kind of something new for all districts. We actually had School Services of California. They uh presented um for us as all districts because we hadn't had that before. So we needed to know, okay, the exceptions are there, but what else can we put in as some additional exception so that, you know, that percentage would increase on the behalf of a school district?
And so it's something that's happened in the other districts as well?
Yes, all all of us.
And it's something that's, you said it's it could be COVID-related or it is COVID?
Definitely, yes.
So it should go away within the next few findings and.
Yes, I I don't foresee it of going forward um as even as early as this fiscal year, twenty-four, twenty-five. We're we're, we'll keep a close eye on it.
And I think that the COVID dollars really really had an impact on financials across sectors, even the nonprofit sector where it it was the carryover of dollars, this and that, and it just it 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 inflated budgets, but it would, you know, you had to spend before you earned those kind of things. It was just.
It was a a tough benefit.
It was a tough benefit, yeah.
But it was like, okay, now we got to balance out something else.
For sure. And just for my own notification, when when do we start our audit and when do we complete it? What what's the, how many lessons to take?
That's a good question. Um, well, we normally schedule, like I said, our interim during spring. Um, we like to give it a week. Um, so we'll give the district ahead, uh, a note ahead of time, like, hey, we, you know, want to schedule it for this week. Uh, what's a good time for your team? Uh, with the remote audit, there's always kind of some, you know, pending request, uh, but we normally can follow up with those during our year-end visit. Um, so again, year-end, we like to give it a week for your size district. And again, we like to schedule those ahead of time and provide our samples ahead of time to get, you know, pers- your personnel enough time to gather information.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
Tracy Sumitra?
I know you guys filed the first uh exemption. Uh, when is the deadline for the second one to be filed for for this past year?
We will start working on that. We'll probably have them ready. Oh, sorry, I'm short on the mission. We'll probably have that ready by next month.
But is there a waiver that the county legal puts on?
They do not. I have it. My knowledge, they have not imposed any type of deadline. But we will get it done sooner than later, now that we have our audit.
Thank you, Ms. Manzo, Ms. uh Ms. Hamburg. Thank you so much for the presentation. It's great work, obviously, and what you what you've been doing for the past year. So we really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you for having me. Good night.
Okay, I'm moving on to at the B, uh, presentation on the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school accountability report card.
Sorry. Good evening. Good evening, Dr. Vegas, or President Board Members in our Rancho community. We are pleased to be here with you to share a summary of the school accountability report card, which is referred to as the SAR. And we will also be providing an overview of the information that a SAR provides about the schools in our district. A school accountability report card or SAR is a public document that provides important information about a school's performance, resources, and demographics, very important. This the SAR is required by law under the Every Student Sitseats Act, and each school SAR must be updated annually and published by February first. So you can imagine we've been pretty busy. Now, the contents in our school SARS include key information such as student enrollment, demographics, data, academic performance, and standardized tests, graduation and dropout rates, school climate, teacher qualifications, financial expenditures, facility conditions, and details about instructional programs and resources. So there's a lot of information that we are uh preparing. The SAR is designed to promote transparency and help parents, educators, and the community evaluate and support our schools. Anyone can access our SAR by visiting the state's SAR portal and typing in the school name or El Rancho Unified School or the city, Pejari Barra. They can also be viewed by visiting each school websites by going to the About section. It's a little tab in our district's everybody's websites and by clicking on the SAR. And the viewer can then choose to view the SAR and report or the SAR summary. So you get a choice of a more detailed report or a summary. Now, the actual SAR report can be found when you click on the SAR report. Again, it provides detailed information about a school's performance, resources, and demographics. The full SAR offers an in-depth look at the school's progress and compliance with state and federal requirements, which is very important, the compliance side. Uh, a SAR summary, on the other hand, condenses the most critical information from full report into a more accessible format, the highlights. Uh, it highlights key data points such as test scores, demographics, trends, making it easier for parents and other viewers to quickly understand the school's overall performance. Viewers can select the language they would like the SAR translated into to ensure they can understand the important information about their child's school. So Spanish, English, or any other language that is necessary. If needed, parents can also request a translated hard copy of the SAR from their school site. And uh, Miss Castillon will continue to share more details about the different sections our SAR contains.
Thank you, Erin.
As you heard, the information pertaining to schools can be viewed in a SAR, including information on teacher qualifications and credentialing, as well as the ratios of students to teachers and other support staff is shared. One is available to view, for example, how many teachers at the school have their clear credential and compare the number and percentage to the district and state. Schools also sha- share what textbooks and materials are available for students and the percent of students who are lacking their own copy. The school's facilities section provides a description of the school's physical condition and planned maintenance. This information is from the most recently collected facility inspection tool or FIT. This data provides a description of any needed maintenance to ensure good repair, the year and month in which the data was collected, the rate each system inspect for each system inspected, and the overall, the school's overall rating. Our most recent FIT report show that one of our elementary schools had an overall rating of exemplary, while our other sites, all our other sites had an overall rating of good, with the exception of one of our elementaries, one of our middle schools, and one of our high schools, who had an overall rating of fair. Each site will work with their custodians and maintenance department so that the issues can be addressed and repaired. In this section of the SAR, we see student academic performance and standardized test scores and performance on state assessments, such as the S F A C, C A S, and C A. Our high school SARS also contain graduation dropout rates in the outcomes and achievement section. In our high school SARS, one can see how many of our students are college and career ready. You can see how many students are participate participated in C T E courses, the percent that completed a C T E program entered a high school diploma, and the percent of graduates who completed all courses required for a U C or Cal State admission. As you review the SARS that we are submitting for your your approval this evening, you will see information contained in each SAR has information that is site-specific, such as the school's average class size, pupil outcomes, chronic absenteeism, and suspension rates, as well as teacher and administrative salaries and professional development information. Thank you for your time, and we hope that our community has a better understanding of what a SAR is, the information it contains, and how to access it. Do you have any questions for us?
Thank you, Miss Castillon. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and move on to the uh questions from the board with Tracy Perez.
Thank you for the detailed presentation and how to access it. I think it's really good for the community to know because I know we talk about it a lot, but where exactly? I I was looking at the middle school um cast data. And when I look at the um, like, how they did on English math, they're exactly the same for all the middles. Is it that, so like, they have the same online, at least uh for last year, the, I think it's like forty-seven percent English, literally all three middle schools have the same score. And I think it was about thirty-six for math, all three middle schools have the same score. Is that by coincidence, or is it that that?
Just let me look at that more closely because that's unautopopulated. So let me double check that information.
That that was my um biggest.
Thank you.
Sorry. And then also, I know Ms. Mahia mentioned it as well, like English language learners, right? Zero percent metering or sitting. So I am excited about the North Park Excel program and how we can utilize that because literacy improves math scores and it comes from there. So that that's the only questions I have. And if you can just give me an update on.
I will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Tracy Sumitra?
When it comes to the FIT um uh assessments, do do you go class by class, every single room in every single school, in order to determine that it passes or how to work?
The custodian or someone from maintenance, uh, schedules and deployment, they do visit uh the classrooms and the areas that need to be inspected. And there is a sheet that they need to follow. And it's not paper, mental, it's digital. So once that information is recorded, um, that's where the scores come out. So I think we've done that. What we, the practice we've done is where they do a walkthrough with with their custodians, say, this needs to be fixed, this roof tile needs to be addressed before the the official visit comes through, that they should be visiting every classroom.
Tracy Mahia?
Thank you for the presentation. Um, yeah, this is a very good snapshot and it's important for the community. You know how we're doing. Um, I believe that every three years, uh, the board is supposed to review the model uh form for the state. And I think that's what we're using now. So
Yes.
Hey, we did it, guys. So scheduled for three years, um, the garden's calendar, um, that will be good. Because with the majority of the time, it just, this gets approved as a consentant, right? And it's, I think it's important for us to take the time to review it at a minimum every three years. But uh, to Tracy Perez's point, yeah, there's something.
First, I missed it. What's that? I missed that. I read the data.
Oh, no, no, no. I was gonna um talk about um the data as as far as 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 far as the data, um, reviewing it, right? Um, so I noticed that for the expenditures for one of the elementary schools is um somewhat higher than the others. And I apologize because I did not submit this as a question. You don't have to answer it right now. But uh Valencia Elementary has their per pupil expenditure at six thousand six hundred eighty-five dollars and seventy-two cents. And the other elementary schools have it in the four thousand range, one in the five thousand range. So we can get the reason why uh the variance uh for that item. Um, the other question that I had was related to um English language learners. Um, definitely uh doing doing more. I know that we're, you know, we're making great strides. Thank you, Ms. uh Thomas Diaz, for that. But this is why it's it's a good uh tool for us to look at, to look at this data and say, hey, though, what are we doing here? Uh, chronic absenteeism was high, but I know that you're doing a lot now. So if you could share some of the strategies that are being used already, so, you know, the community knows what we're doing to address that. Because we're like in the eighteen twenties on on some of the percentages for those who at at the last four years.
Yes, thank you.
Can you share some?
Yeah, I'm so sorry. I was a little confused writing my grass and asking. So I'm sorry, I do need to confirm. I'll put in the board, update the difference of the per pupil spending that Valencia's compared to the other sites. And then you, the sharing the strategies of our English learners, what we're currently doing with our students to support them. Yeah, so currently, we're working with um our El Pac assessors. They're going into the classroom and also trying to work with students so that they can build the strat- the test taking skills and build their language development so they're better prepared for the El Pac so that they can um reclassify. So we're hoping that will also help our reclassification rate. We'll also um have different workshops and El Pac Academy where our E L uh resource teacher is working with principals and their E L P C T, which is their English language uh contact program teacher to in uh use different strategies in the classroom and the resource, the existing resources they have. We've also worked with different sites to identify additional curriculum that they can use to supplement our existing E O D program. And we're giving them training with the Benchmark Funding Program they received um so that they continue to use those strategies in the classroom.
So thank you. And if you could talk, share a little bit about the chronic absenteeism strategies?
So. Uh, so some of the strategies, I mean, they're, they vary from school to to school site. Uh, some of them uh really look at the individual situations as to why the students are being absent. And then they're very creative on what they do to improve chronic absenteeism. District-wide, we do have the Attention to Attendance. The thank you board has approved, uh, where we send communication out to the families regularly to uh really emphasize the importance of coming to school. Uh, we have also attendance interns. So we have mental health interns that uh work with our department that we then send out to school sites that focus specifically on attendance. And they're doing a lot of case management where they're calling families individually, working with the students individually, really trying to find out what those barriers and challenges are to the attendance, getting to the root of that, and helping to resolve and give them some resources for that. Uh, we've also improved on our awards. Uh, we stopped that during COVID. It's come back. So we do have um attendance incentives, but you know, from each school, whether it's an award through an assembly, certificate, recognition. Uh, we have community-wide events. I mean, that's one. I know uh, Fort President looked at us, wanted more. So we're looking at doing another one this school year. It's just hard to get the volunteers once a year starts going. But going out and do those home visits and really make it, making it uh, you know, personalized uh for the families to make sure that we get out there and talk to them. Those are just some of the strategies. Thank you. Appreciate you sharing. You're welcome.
Thank you, Tracy De Faro. Uh, thank you so much for the presentation. Um, similar questions to my col- for my colleagues, the the, I guess the other question I would have is how presenting it to us and, you know, the community here in this forum is great. And how how are we gonna message it out to our parents so that now we're gonna use parent square to get this out and say, this is how you would access it? You know, you know what I'm saying? So that everybody has awareness, awareness of it.
And I don't know if you do want to answer, but uh certainly I think it's it's an information tool that I think the school sites are going to be sharing uh to the community. We're gonna ask them to message out the information so that so the parents are aware, what's the standard, what's the status of our schools? I think that that's one of the uh, it's more uh relevant, I think, when it comes from the individual school sites that they could communicate directly to the parents and let them know that this is this is one set of information to give them a sense of how the schools are doing. Yet the data, even though the data may not necessarily be, uh, you know, might be a little bit behind because that's kind of the way it runs. But at least it gives them a sense of what the school is doing and uh through constant communication and just in 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 the terms of making sure that our community is fully aware of what is happening in the school. This is one of the tools they can use.
And that that would happen after February first, after we?
On or before. So we'll be timed by February first.
Okay, so after we file, then we communicate. It'll it'll be available.
To the parents, yes, you have mine.
Great. Thank you.
Um, board member, I'm so sorry. I just want to uh communicate some information. So you asked about a strategy for our English learners. So for our English learners, we have our designated and we have our integrated strategy. The designated is going to ensure that we have a very safe time for our students within a class time. Integrated means that they're going to be learning throughout their class is. And so we have that coming on throughout our district. Uh, fake E L strategies is is what she's referring to. So in our middle, our secondary students have the E L D period at the elementary schools. We, teachers have thirty minutes where they teach their E L English learners, specific strategies for our students to uh build those skills, especially language. It's so important for them to do that.
Dr. Lopez and and uh K Kisa, um, Caskey, thank you so much for the presentation.
Dr. Lopez and and uh K Kisa, um, thank you so much for the presentation. I did have one uh request. I don't know if it's too um super or too big, but because this question has been brought up before, as far as the the fit um is concerned, is there a way to get um a sample or or how the the fit um sheet is, you said is the sheet that's filled out or it's it's done? If it's done electronically, we need a snapshot or a copy of it. Um, but also how the follow-up to the fit is done as far as if something is wrong, like and the the reason why I'm asking is we we get a lot of concerns uh from uh parents um as far as the status of our schools, right? As far as, you know, there's there's this wrong or X wrong, Y wrong. And then we're constantly being asked, you know, what we're doing to to fix these things. So I just want to be able to have um the the process. I want to know more about the process. So I'm able to explain how the process works and how we go about fixing these items.
And and if I can just uh take a shot at that real quick, I think in in terms of
Yeah, I don't know.
of giving a you uh of the board, giving the board a kind of a basically the list of things that that we're looking for. I think that's something we'll provide with you right away. Then you get it. And I think that's a great idea to be able to see what is it that we're looking for. And then uh we'll give you also the board of data, uh more concrete update of what are the steps taken uh to make this happen? You know, what step one, that that one kind of preview uh come for the conversation with the site custodian, identify certain things and then what that looks like the next time around. Um, we'll provide you more uh detailed information um so that you're aware of these that that part of it. And then when something is wrong, you know, what is the work order process? For example, if they identify certain things are 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 not correct, what is the process that happens after that? So we can provide that all comprehensively so that you you know, whoever asks you, you can say, this is this is the process that we take at least for this. Uh, yet if there's other concerns, you know, anytime that parents may see something, but you know, we absolutely want them to say something rather than you say uh let them let the principal know that, hey, you they saw something or they heard something, they come home, pick kids, come home and say, hey, the bathrooms are there. We've got actually a lot of information that way. Bathrooms are not in good repair. We get that information, even though the fit's over, you know, we we want to be able to support that in any capacity.
Thank you, Dr. Vegas. And again, thank you for the presentation. This was great.
I just wanted to just say thank you because it takes a lot of departments to bring this together. I want to thank um the maintenance department with their director, uh, you know, Mr. Compton, our director of fiscal, Ms. Uh, Hattenberg. Uh, Olga helps with the textbooks, information, uh, H R, Dr. Matthews, excuse me, Mr. Matthews. It's just, it brings everybody together, everybody reading and going through the process, Danny in our office, just everybody supports each other. So I just want to say it it takes a lot, but it's it's well worth it.
Thank you, Dr. Lopez. And we and we do see the support that's behind you and here with you today. So we we thank we thank all of you guys for the work, the hard work that's done. Thank you so much. Okay, so moving on, we have a comments report by superintendent and cabinet.
Yes, thank you so much. And I do appreciate uh a lot of presentations. They have a lot of great information. And we had the students that were here that we celebrated and this makes for a full day. And it and it just reminds me of what a what a truly a uh historic time to be part of this district. I mean, so many things are happening and so many things to to really celebrate. And I wanted just a few things down and you know, as we begin twenty twenty-five, I in twenty, the you know, twenty the twenty-first and and so much is happening, so many activities. And I have visited schools and they they are uh ready to to rock, you know, a lot of good work going on. And I just want to recognize that we're very lucky because, you know, we weren't really uh hit by any of the fires or any of the uh other situations that that really has has changed the dynamic in a lot of districts. You know, we we haven't even had power failures or any of that stuff that that has impacted uh other schools. So I, you know, I'm, you know, just take a moment to to think about all the all those that have been affected by it and wish them a a quick recovery. Um, just also looking ahead, we we have about fifty days uh before state testing begins. And so this is a really exciting time because this is when uh you start uh showing what you know, you know, students start focusing and energies are there and a teacher start getting excited and students are really um focused on on what is it that's going to be on those uh those tests. And and we're really hoping that these next fifty days that everyone gets on that same page and is focused on the number one thing, which is doing the best that we possibly can. Make sure that we we learn what we we've actually been learning all year and and to demonstrate it. And um just also a quick reminder that reading is one of those important skills that we're focusing and we're asking all students. It's a challenge out there where anyone who's watching or anyone who hears it. And we want every student to read every single day because you really master reading. If you really learn to read, you're gonna be successful in any subject. You know, that helps you in math, it helps you in science, it helps you in in social studies. So encouragement to all our students, make that time, just take those fifteen, twenty minutes every single day, parents. Read with them. And that's gonna make an impact on how well your kids do every day. I can tell you the one thing that will make the biggest difference in 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 learning is if your students just get a little bit better in in um in reading. And just think about it, um, whatever you're trying to do, whether you're trying to play guitar or play soccer, you practice a little bit more, you get a little bit better. To do with reading, read a little bit more, you get a little bit better. Uh, I want to just bring to the attention that February brings two important observances. Uh, first week of February is National School Counselors Week. And I'd like to recognize the incredible work our counselors do to support their academic and social well-being for their students. Uh, contributions are essential uh to our student success. Also, February is also Career Technical Education Month. And uh over the years, uh, we've been significantly expanded our C T programs and pathways, providing students with meaningful hands-on learning experiences that bear them for the future careers and post-secondary opportunities. These programs are a way of pride for our district. Um, and so I wanted to just look ahead and it's kind of an interesting conversation. Safety was an issue today. You know, we talked a lot about that and coincidentally, or or maybe not coincidentally, but but I knew it was important for us to talk about. We do have our our chief of police who will be uh next month at the next meeting, presenting a little bit about our safety protocols. And you know, in terms of what we can actually say, because some things that we 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 don't want to say, but we certainly want to make sure that our community is aware of what are some of the major protocols that we have in place uh to respond to these types of situations. And and I I understand the gravity of situations that could have that have happened. Um, but I don't know if it was a, you know, just a matter of luck. I don't think it was. I think it was that our response was was done done in a way that what people were trained, when the lockdown was called, people did what they needed to do. Um, you know, we had uh five S S Os at 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 the site with two police officers, one school police, and our deputy was on site. So the the response time was was really just seconds. And in fact, uh, for that essence, for additional officers, it took a little longer, but uh all of those pieces, I I think there's there's something to be proud of as well because uh yeah, there was a a good response. Is there a opportunity to be better? And should these things never happen? They shouldn't. But you know, we uh we our officers did a good job and our S R Ls were there. And and so and we'll continue to learn. And we had a competency brief. And there are some things that we learned from this situation that are gonna help us be even better. Um, and so later this evening, uh, we will be adopting a resolution recognizing you board, our Board of Education. Um, so this is in honor of Board Recognition Month. Um, uh your hard work and dedication are instrumental in pushing forward so many of the initiatives that are shaped in the future of our district. And on behalf of the entire community, I want to thank you for your commitment to our students, staff and families. And so I'll say a little bit more when when it's time for the resolution. But thank you for your continued dedication to our students as we're helping us to make twenty twenty-five a year of progress and achievement.
Thank you, sir. And moving forward, we got the um item fifteen, Board of Education announcements and acknowledgements. I'm going to start over here in my head with trustee Perez.
Good evening. Um, to push for reading, one of our goals, actually, me and my friends from high school, we're doing book club because you never stop reading. And I hadn't read in a long time. Um, and it just it does. It takes you to another world. And it's just such such a nice thing. So I definitely, you know, at all ages, not just our students, but parents too, create, get a book, create a book club. Um, I in back in December, I attended the I B luncheon at our ranchel, which was so great to see the accomplishments and how how much your students are are getting before, you know, accomplishing before they even graduate. Um, so kudos to everyone involved. It was a great event. Hearing their stories and it was the alums that were coming back because they find the scores later. So that was really great. Uh, Happy New Year. I hope everyone took a rest till break. I didn't. Um, I just, you know, sometimes it's good to just, we tell our teachers and staff, just close your computers and just relax. And I think that's definitely what um I tried to do. Uh, congrats again to our scholar athletes, huge, huge, huge. Just I love when the students are here. It's just the energy is just different and it reminds us why we're here. Um, I if I'll send this to Dr. Vegas in March, uh Downey unified will be doing a middle school esports competition. Um, so it's a great like and that for maybe our middle school principals, maybe our directors to attend to see what they're doing in Downey in terms of esports. I know we're pushing this at the high school level, but they're already starting to, you know, they already had it going in the middle school. So I don't know something we're looking into elementary. So it's just a great way for them. They've offered to help us to start our program. Um, so I'll send that to the board members if anyone's interested. And then just echoing Dr. Vegas, sending my condolences to anyone affected by the fires. Um, it's a tragedy. And you know, definitely for me and Lauren, what what do I do if I'm in that situation? Um, so definitely, definitely sending my condolences. I didn't know the big topic today was safety. Um, and just know that we do hear you. We are listening. Our our brains are trying to figure out how do we solve this together. Um, I do trust that a hundred percent in our chief. I know we have a plan coming and I know it's conversations that we're gonna have to have because it was a good awakening, right, to see what what's working and what's not working. Um, so please, please, please know that we are working on that. We will bring that back. Um, that is all for my updates.
Thank you so much, trustee Sevajer.
Sorry, I'm new again, trying to work that thing. So um, I have a couple of things. Uh, also, I did, I was able to stop by and congratulate the I B kids. That's such an accomplishment. Those classes are so rigorous. So shout out to all of them. Um, I stopped by Rivera, I attended the band concert, the cheer concert and some event at Bernie for the holidays. And I know I'm supposed to be taking pictures. I'm sorry. I apologize, everyone. I wanna go ahead and remind everyone that the school district does partner with Hazel. And Hazel, um, you just go to hazel.co and it's you can find it on the board on the school district website and it's um one-on-one counseling, support, it's free, it's fast and easy, it's free to all students. Uh, I know a lot of people are going through a lot right now um in regards to the fire, anything that we can do to help out our neighbors. Because you know, I know that they would come together to help support us. I was out there a couple of days. Um, one of the days I saw first responders, um, you know, they're intense. They're um sleeping on cots outside. Uh, it it's it's just so impactful, all the you all these people that lost everything. I mean, anything that we can do as a community to help out, I'm I'm with you guys uh one hundred percent. Um, thank you for following up with the parent on the Saddle Star update uh as regards to uh what needs to be fixed there and going forward, you know, there's some awesome kids attending that school. We need to make sure that they have a beautiful place to go to school as well. Um, as far as I just have a couple of other things that I'll make it real quick. Um, due to the fires, you know, we look to rebuild L A, we need to be um aware uh that uh there's gonna be a lot of construction jobs coming up in the future, a lot of um opportunities for our students uh to get very good paying jobs in design and architecture. And we need to keep our eyes open uh to any opportunities that we can bring to our students so that they can succeed and they can uh continue. Um, I just have, I don't know if this belongs here or at a or at towards the end, but um I in regards to the fiscal responsibility and holding jobs, I understand that um stuff happens, but I know I see change orders and I get it. I again, I understand that you cannot foresee everything that's gonna happen. There could be environmental, environmental issues, abatement issues. But I would like to see what the school, this reduction, Dr. Vegas, we're doing to uh curb that in the future because so it looks like we have a, we're not gonna have extra money or that leeway. We need to make sure that when we are getting these quotes in, we kind of adhere or we look at the worst and best case scenarios. Um, as far as the events that um happened this week, I I'm sorry, my voice is trying. I am a parent. You know, I have been coming to the board meetings as a parent on the other side and advocating for safety for so long and asking for the district to get a better number, to get a better handle of what's going on. And I would really like to request uh an ad hoc committee uh with stakeholders so that we can move quickly and swiftly and make sure that these things don't happen again, make sure that something worse doesn't happen. Make sure that parents know that when they send their kids off to school, they're safe. Um, so whether it uh be between um, you know, you have representatives from the different schools, uh from different uh of course cabinet here and stuff. I I just feel like something needs to be done so that I know you're addressing the protocols and that that but there's so much more that we can do. And grades and sports and everything is important, but we cannot keep our students safe then. How can they even participate in anything? So um, again, thank you, everyone, for the great presentations that you guys gave today. Uh, I appreciate it. I appreciate your patience with me, uh, first time board member and uh have a good night.
Thank you so much, trustee Mahia.
Thank you. Um, Happy New Year, everyone. I know it's already the twenty-first, but it's still Happy New Year. Um, yeah, to piggyback on what uh trustee Christine uh Sevajer said, yes, um, definitely safety is at the top of of the mind uh due to the recent incidents. Um, I know that it's something that we're gonna definitely um have expectations for, you know, plans, the rules passed to communicate to the community, staff, teachers um classified as well. Um, with that, um, just on a report, a couple of um events that I attended uh back in December, I attended the uh high school band concert and my favorite part was the jazz band. I love the jazz band. They're amazing. They're all amazing, but I really enjoyed jazz. I I also have the privilege of attending the Real Vista Christmas program. I want to thank um Ms. Ms. Cabral and Ms. Uh, Hugo for the invitation. It was so fun. Oh, my goodness, these little ones are so adorable with their presentations and just uh kudos to all of the the schools, all the elementary schools that put so much work into their their programs. Uh, parents love it. It's a to highlight for them. I want to say kudos to uh Aracha High School for the wonderful uh Ernie Johnson Scholarship Golf Tournament. Um, athletic director Goyanaga, Principal Goyanaga and Super Bowl Real, they did an amazing job. It's my first time attending. And I was very, very, very impressed. Didn't get to say for all of it, but just was very impressed. Um, I was able to attend the Bernie Tech uh Yellow Brick Road performance at Long Beach. Amazing. Again, expressing my gratitude to Mrs. Garcia, Principal Gallegos uh for that invitation. The performance was really spectacular, just now. It it was amazing to see these kids singing and so confident. It was true. It was adorable. Um, I attended the C S B A webinar and the governor's budget proposal. This is just, you know, the beginning. There's more to come. But it was very informative. I want to congratulate board president, um, John Contreras on his appointment to the C S B A Dunkin' Assembly. Was appointed by our our region twenty-four directors. Congratulations to you. Uh, I do have an announcement. Laxa will be having a virtual meeting on Monday, on January twenty-seventh at six P M. We're gonna be going over dual enrollment and safe schools for our immigrant students. They can be sharing resources. Uh, with that, um, we're also gonna be meeting as uh directors with uh Senator Nina Gonzalez. She's sponsoring S B forty-eight. And S B forty-eight is a bill to uh restrict local education agencies of uh local uh law enforcement agencies from cooperating with federal immigration enforcement officers on or near school grounds and providing additional protections for students and families to attend school safely. I'm hoping uh we're able to get a resolution as a board to support uh uh this this bill. Um, wanted to announce that completed the four hundred minute uh winter reading challenge by the L County Library and share some goals. So my goals, three of my goals this year, three, I think, equals. Uh, one is to do fifty hikes this year. I'm on hike number four so far. Um, read a hundred books, four books, right, so far. And to meet quarterly with uh legislators, uh meet quarterly with them and just develop those relationships. And uh some of the laxa directors have super really good relationships with the legislators. And I want to be at that level, having those close uh relationships. Lastly, um, one of my personal privilege, I would like a forest journey today in memory of those awesome fires. Um, if you could I can put it right for us too.
Thank you, trustee, uh, trustee LaFarga.
Um, yes, Happy New Year, twenty-one days into our twenty twenty-five, wishing everybody all the best for for the new year and much success. Um, don't want to belabor the point about the for the new year and much success. Um, don't wanna belabor the point about the safety, um, but, but I think it's important that we all speak on it because it, it is a, a critical issue, you know, when you have four or five incidents in one week, it just weighs heavy on all of us and, and in our community and our learning community. Um, and, and so there is work to be done. Uh, yes, the protocols are, are, are really important. And I also think communication is important and how soon we all learn about what's going on, how we get the message out to our parents. Um, and one of the things you see is social media. It's out there before we all, we get it, right? And that's no, nobody's fault, but it's like, who needs to know when, when we even know and how fast we need to know to be able to respond to, to questions that come to us right away. Um, and because at the same time judgments are being made. And we, we all have to kind of be on the same message and the same kind of, uh, response, uh, so that uh, we're aligned in, in how we're gonna address the, the issues that are happening at, at that moment in time. So just things to think about in that regard. Um, yesterday was a, a consequential day as, as uh, Neil Curry on, uh, shared and in terms of the executive orders that were, were passed, um, and, and we do need to protect our most vulnerable uh, populations in our district and our community with respect to those executive orders that, you know, uh, could put people in, 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 um, in a position where we, we, you know, we can lose students, we can lose family members without knowing them. What are we gonna do? So I, I do wanna echo those comments and it's important for us to be, um, proactive in that regard. Um, and, and if, if we can communicate what the district is doing very, you know, um, succinctly and, and, and often, as often as we can, um, to reassure that we're, we're on this, that I think that, that's really important. Um, yesterday was also Martin the Thirteen Day. Um, I wanna recognize his, his life and his, uh, his, uh, impact in terms of equity and, and racial equity and, 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 and just, you know, changing the world, uh, to be a better place for, for all of us. And one of the quotes that I always lean on is, uh, you know, and, and this is really something that applies to all of us as servant leaders. Uh, you know, the, the nice, most persistent and urgent question is what are we doing for others? And this is our work in our, in our roles as leaders in our district is to make sure that we meet the needs of our community, uh, and, and continue to create an environment where all of us thrive, uh, but more importantly, our students and, and, uh, and have the outcomes that we wanna have. But just wanna encourage us all to, to have that servant leadership perspective because it's not about us. It's about those that we're serving, um, and we're trying to impact, which is at the end of the, the day is, is our students. So just wanted to share that with everybody. Um, I did also attend the, um, the golf tournament, which was great. It was a lot of fun. It was great playing with you for the first time, Trustee Mahia. Hope to get out on the links again with you and, and Dr. Villegas, uh, you as well. So thank you for joining and, and, um, Mr. Gattara's, uh, let's do it again. Um, during the holidays, I attended the, well, before the holidays, Rivera Middle School, uh, band performance. And I just wanna give big props to my, my, my attorney, to Miss Pat Penagnibon. It's Miss Pete, Miss Pete. I, I got close, right? So she's here to call her Miss Pete. She has really grown that program. Like in, I've probably been to last three years that we, we, uh, I've attended her, her, um, her performances and, you know, probably twenty kids first year, hundred kids in the next, and it felt like it was two hundred this last one. So she has just invested a lot of her personal time and passion to it and just great to see that, uh, grow, uh, at every part of that. So super excited for, for the school as well. Um, then, uh, and in terms of being of service, yes. Uh, you know, well, whatever role we can all play in, in supporting those affected by the, the recent fires and their recovery efforts, that would be great. Uh, so yeah, with that, all in my comments and, and thank you very much and have a great evening.
Thank you, Sharon. Uh, yes, definitely. Um, attended some of the events that, you know, we've asked, the golf tournament, the band performances. Um, all, all great events, you know, it's, it really brings the, the, the community together. And, you know, signing up with Miss Pete, she really has done a lot with that, with that band over there. She's grown from just guitars to now full-on bands and now, uh, drama, you know, being in incorporated in there. She's doing a really great job. So kudos. Uh, the band performance at Al Rancho, um, I, I always, you know, I rave about sports, but the band program, uh, you, you doing great stuff over there, Mr. Rush. She's doing awesome, excellent. We've seen it grow again the past three years. From maybe twenty-five to fifty, now a hundred and next year is, it's out of control. It, it's, it's in a good sense, right? Um, and they're building that, that, that camaraderie within the students, you know, and the, the, you know, the grades and whatnot and everything's there. It's just, it's, it's a great program that's happening over there. So congratulations to them. Um, spring sports, you know, I, I wish luck to all of the, um, uh, athletes, um, to, today, just as an update, uh, from what I understand, the last score was six-zero, uh, versus Whittier today with the girls soccer. So great job. Uh, good luck to the, uh, chair, uh, this weekend as they go into CIF competition, which is a big competition. Also, good luck to them. Good luck to my baby girl. Um, thank you for all of our first responders as, as was, was, was stated. Um, you know, the, the work that, that they're doing, um, in a, in the, the, the recent fires. Uh, just a great, great, huge thank you to all of them. Um, we are doing something in, in response to that. Um, and we'll have more information out soon this week. Um, the, in conjunction with the city manager, Mayor Garcia, Councilmember Amacho, uh, Dr. Villegas, myself and, uh, uh, trustee LaFarga here. We've been discussing, um, as far as uh, doing a fundraising event. And this is, um, more so from the, from the city side, but as a district, we are gonna be working in conjunction with them. Um, more information to come out soon. I'll, I'll leave that to the, uh, to Dr. Villegas. Uh, but we are working together with the city. We will, we will have more information coming out soon. So stay tuned for that. It's a big event. Uh, we are gonna be doing some fundraising efforts. So, uh, we are working on it for those of, uh, those in the community in our district that do wanna get involved, that wanna do some giving, um, to that, to that cause, uh, we are working on it. So stay tuned, more and more news to come on that. Um, as was mentioned before, we are, I would like to also close in memory of those that lost their lives in the, um, in the fires and also in, uh, memory if, if the board agrees, um, of Miss Alex Rover's Han, who is granddaughter to Senator Bob Archileta. So with that being said, um, we will move forward to, yes. Yes, go ahead.
We have a fundraiser. Uh, so if anybody wants to buy a brick for the stadium, I know we have a website. Please, 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 please buy one. I've heard about two. Uh, it's a great to leave your legacy. It's a way to, for any Don out there, any Rivera resident, I believe it's one fifty for the small brick and then it goes up in price. Uh, but please, 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 this money goes back to the athletics. It goes back to our students. Uh, so just, yeah, thank you.
And what a great way to engrave your, your legacy or put your name down and, and, you know, be part of the Rancho family. So yes, you're, you're absolutely right. And more information on the website is posted. I, I did say I believe is on website. Um, and also, um, at our school. So, um, it, it is a great event. Oh, Instagram as well. I'm sorry. Oh, and I do apologize. We did go a little bit after, so I need to get a vote, uh, if we give a consensus to extend the meeting. Um, we will vote up until it's nine thirty. So we'll go until eleven o'clock if possible, if we have to, because we do have some more items to discuss and finish up the meeting as well. So can I get a consensus all in favor? Yes, yes. Thank you. All right. So moving forward, um, consent agenda. Consent agenda. Uh, do I get a motion?
So.
Can I pull one?
Uh, yes.
We have the motion and then I pull, right? I believe, yeah.
Is there any?
Yeah, sir. Can I pull sixteen Diaz and Dog, number ten?
Sixteen Diaz and Dog, number ten.
That's all.
You did? That's it? Okay. And anybody else? You follow me? Okay, so the motion was made by, uh, trustee LaFarga. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Consent for giving move on to sixteen detail. Right. Okay, we pass and then we got the vote. Okay, sorry. Um, Christie Perez.
Yes.
Trustee Mahia.
Yes.
Trustee Savedra.
Yes.
Trustee LaFarga. Yes, and myself, yes. Okay, great. Moving on to item sixteen detail. I have a motion.
Some of second.
Okay. Yes, discussion.
Highlight this. This is huge, the fact that I know the bug in science of, but just the fact that we have a ten thousand dollar grant. It's gonna be a project leap away. It's gonna be an entire, you know, career that's so needed, especially with technology with AI coming in. Uh, so I just wanted to highlight kudos to the team. Thank you, Ms. Tavas Diaz. Thank you to Catherine Adame. Um, everyone involved on the team is huge. And Mr. Oh, she's probably gonna be the teacher. Uh, so huge, huge, thank you. Thank you to our Rancho. Uh, once this does, I do hopefully market it and push it, get as many students as we can. Uh, so I just wanted to say thank you and for those who take that's all.
Excellent. Okay, so with that being said, we're gonna take a vote on that one. Yes. So trustee Perez.
Yes.
Trustee Mahia.
Yes.
Trustee Savedra. Trustee LaFarga.
Yes.
And myself, yes. So, so moving on. To seventeen new business action items.
Superintendent's office. Yes, so as I had mentioned a little bit ago, there's a, um, resolution. Uh, this is a resolution for, uh, supportive of the school board recognition month. And again, um, you know, rather than, than read the, the resolution, you know, I'm just gonna share a few thoughts that from paper, um, for, uh, the board. And so tonight, we are honored to introduce a resolution recognizing the incredible contributions of the Board of Education of the Arantxa Unified School District. This dedicated group of individuals works tirelessly, devoting countless hours to ensure the success of our schools and the students. Their leadership, vision, and commitment leave a lasting impact on our community and help shape a lot of futures for generations of students. And again, rather than simply reading the resolution, I wanna take a moment to highlight the profound impact that the Board of Education has made on our district and community. They advocate passionately for our students, families, and community, ensuring that every voice is heard and valued. They have a set, they have set a clear, inspiring vision for the future of our schools, fostered an environment where students, staff, and families can truly flourish. Their care and dedication are evident in their commitment to ensuring that our schools are safe and that our facilities are constantly being improved. Then I'll take pride in the significant progress being made across many of our campuses thanks to their leadership and focus in creating the best possible environment for learning. They do all of this not for recognition, but because they care deeply about our children, their education, and the future of our community. Tonight, we congratulate them on their remarkable service, their steadfast love for our community, and their, and their tireless efforts to make Arantxa Unified a place we can all be proud of. So thank you for that and, and we're hoping that it passes resolutions.
Thank you. Before we do get to the voting, do you want to? Did we have anything to say? Everyone need comments or? I, I just wanna congratulate my, my, my colleagues here as far as, you know, being on the dice and and doing a great job. I, I lean on each and every one of you. I'm always asking the questions that, you know, I, I don't know, cause I don't know. Um, so I just wanna give each and every one of you a great thank you and, and for care for the community as, as was stated. So with that being said, uh, go ahead and take it to a vote. Just, I'm, I'm sorry. Can I have a motion?
Second.
Again. Lean to the board. Motion made by trustee Mahia and second by trustee Perez. Okay, trustee Perez.
Yes.
Trustee Mahia.
Yes.
Trustee Savedra. Trustee LaFarga.
Yes.
And myself, yes. Motion passes. Resolution passes. Okay, moving on. Uh, number two, approved conference attendance opportunity to the California School Board Association, Association of California School Administrators Coast to Coast Federal Advocacy Event, Washington, D C. Can I get a motion?
So.
Second.
Any discussion?
Any comment?
Yes.
Um, I know there was a public comment mentioned about this ten thousand dollars is general fund. I highly disagree with that because I've seen for the first time that I attended, it was because the school board members advocated so that the one-time funds get extended, that that happened. So this isn't just us going to DC for fun. Trust me, it's, it is a jam-packed, um, agenda. You're meeting with legislators, you're meeting policymakers. We are the voice for the things that we see. And so now the legislators, so one of the things that we talked about was you put a lot of constraints and a lot of expectations for special ed, special education, but we don't get the funding for it. And legislators need to hear that. When they create these budgets, they're not thinking that they're not on the ground. And so this is an amazing opportunity for board members to advocate for students, to advocate for teachers, for staff. It's not, I very highly disagree. This is not a waste of money. This is actually for us to get more money, to get more funding for our students. So I highly encourage any board member to attend, and that was my, my comment.
Thank you, trustee, uh, Perez. Oh, I'm sorry. I agree. Anybody else? And I, I also agree with the statement that was just said as well. So with that being said, we're go ahead and take it to a vote. Uh, trustee Perez.
Yes.
Trustee Mahia.
Yes.
Trustee Savedra. Trustee LaFarga.
Yes.
And myself, yes.
We don't have to say who, right? Right now.
Are we, are we gonna select right now or is that something we can discuss at a later time?
We, we have a deadline right now. I was thinking we'd do it at the next meeting.
There's an early registration fee and then there's like a factor, but I don't know what that cut off.
Can we bring that up at the, uh, February? Forty-fourth? Yeah, yeah, yeah. So that we can get the ball rolling.
We should have that, yeah.
Good, great. Thank you so much. Okay, item B, Divisional Educational Services. Uh, number one, receive the first reading provided by Board Policy and Administrative Regulation zero four six zero, Local Control and Accountability Plan. Can you get a motion?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, quick question. So is this first reading and adoption because it's an action item? Rather than just the first reading? We, we, we've done our first reading and adoption, like the bits of the line I'm asking is because it's an, as an action item.
And so, and, um, Jasmine, I don't know if, uh, is this to be adopted today and, uh, or first meeting and, and adoption is just first reading of, of the, uh, um, the administration rights for
We already.
Local control for the LCAP? It was just a finished. Well, we voted in here, I, our users and experiment, so that would mean that it's first reading and, and adoption. So it would be that, the adoption. And if, if the, if the board is, is good with that, it is, uh, like you said, the CSBA recommendation.
So the two edits were already discussed and presented. Okay. And is everybody okay with that as far as the first reading and the adoption? Yes. Okay. So with that being said, we're gonna go ahead and take it to a vote. Trustee Perez.
Yes.
Trustee Mahia.
Yes.
Trustee Savedra. Trustee LaFarga.
Yes.
And myself, yes. And going on to item C, Divisional Business Services, approved resolution twenty-seven dash two thousand twenty-four slash two thousand twenty-five, authorizing filing of applicants uh, for state allocation board administered programs. Can you get a motion?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Trustee Mahia.
Yeah, so, so for this one, I know it requires the facilities master plan. I just want a clarification on that. It's gonna be the one we already have? Or, or, you know?
Technically, it's the one we've already had to, for the technical aspect, that's being followed with it. But, um, you know, certainly we, we wanna bring the master plan to, to the next meeting, you know, the February fourth meeting. If you wanna see that or you or hopefully that would be a new one adopted by then.
And then my, um, second question or ask for anything, had a information Friday update. It was okay with the board, uh, the new board may have had, um, it's that part of that component that they need. So it's that. Okay.
That's obvious here. Any word discussion? Go ahead and take it to a vote. Trustee Perez.
Yes.
Trustee Mahia.
Yes.
Trustee Savedra.
Yes.
Trustee LaFarga.
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, number two, acceptance of our unified school districts, twenty twenty-three dash twenty twenty-four, financial audit report of the fiscal year ending in June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Here and done. Go ahead and take it to a vote. Trustee Perez.
Yes.
Trustee Mahia.
Yes.
Trustee Savedra. Trustee LaFarga.
Yes.
And myself, yes. And moving on to item eighteen, recommendations for any future agenda items. Trustee Perez.
Uh, so to formalize it, I had written it out echoing as well. Um, and I think it's an action. So the safety, I had put a safety committee, but a similar ad hoc committee, uh, specifically. Uh, specifically with, you know, what was mentioned, the chronic behavior and the violence, right? So not just safety, but also the chronic behavior in the classrooms. Specifically with those goals, um, and then it would be up to Dr. Villegas, who would sit in that committee, um, but echoing similar, just to formalize, if I can get a second.
Second.
And then the next one is, um, I don't know if we already do this. It's an information item, uh. Downey is doing, it's called Classified School Employee Summer Assistance. So they give, I believe it's ten percent of their. Salary, um, and then the district, which is coming from a grant, matches it and they get it in the summer. So I'm just curious if we've looked into it or redo it, um, and it could just be just simple information.
I will look into that. I know we do a summer savings program with our classified that. And I don't know if it's exactly that, that, I don't know how it's, if it's not any additional match, it's a district, it's a way of, of them being able to get some. Revenue over the summer for those that don't work over the summer. But I'll look into that to see what, I, I'll show the board exactly what we do. And see if it's, well, uh, comparable to what you've heard in other districts.
And I can give a second. Thank you. That's.
My only question, what, what type of grant would that come from of the money?
I was looking, it's coming from the state. I don't. I don't, I can send it to you. I don't know exactly where the money is coming from. I know it's from the state, but they match. So that'd be, I mean, it's taxable. But it's a great thing to look into. But they might, we might do it, but I, I had never heard of it. So I just wanted to see what we do.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll keep an update this weekend. I'm pretty sure that we do do exactly that same thing.
Any of the recommendations for future agenda, uh, trustee, uh, La Farga?
I know we're, we're, you, we're gonna have the, the chief speak on protocols for safety. Um, was wondering on the, if in a board update, we can get what communication protocols are when incidents happen. And who gets, who knows what, when, and what, you know, those kind of details. If, if we have the plan or if we need to create it, whatever the, the status of that.
I can get a second. I can check on that. Let's thank you. Good. And trustee, okay, trustee Mejia?
Yes, um. I have three. Uh, one is A B thirty two sixteen, the, uh, smartphone policy, which is, uh. It has to be implemented by July first, twenty twenty six. I know that we have a policy per se, but this one is the one regarding. Limiting the use of smartphones in classrooms or those school sites, um. Year goes by pretty fast, so we could schedule that out, that we can get information on it or. It could be a Friday update. We want it to, so we can be on top of that. Uh, the second one, and this is a second request.
Good.
Oh, thank you so much. Uh, the second one is the hazard mitigation plan that I have requested before, um, within the current events. Right? I think that this needs to be moved up on the list. Uh, we need to be ready. Um, case in point, if you live here in P River, we did not have any electricity. Uh, at Christmas Eve, right? But it could have been at our school site. We could have been a plot of electricity for a couple of days. So we need to be ready. Uh, so if you can bring that up, um. Moving upon the to do.
Second.
The second. And then the third one was regarding the safety as well. Um, we really have a safety committee. From what I, I know. But what we don't know, or at least what I don't know is when those meetings occur. So maybe it's information item, but, uh, or a recommendation. To scheduling orderly meetings, but not only for, you know, internal for us to know, but for the community to know as well. And definitely echoing what, uh, uh, my colleague said, it has to be. An all hands on deck type of meeting. It can't be just, you know, just. Just administration, just, it, it has to be everyone. And, um, I had, uh, previously, uh, given information on what they were still. They have an all hands on deck and it's quarterly. So I'm gonna be, and, and I may have a second, so now we can get that information for quarterlies. Thank you.
Disagreeing with the, uh, just agreeing, not disagreeing, just agreeing with what you just said as well. You know, we do need to get our safety, plan our safety. Concerns out to the public through social media via, you know, whatever modes we have as a district. Um, there were a lot of concerns tonight, uh, from the public, um, that are very warranted. And we have been asking as a board, uh, you know. Three of us now, it's, you know, three of us have children within the district, you know, and at the school where the incident happened. I happen to have three of my family members that are at that school, you know. So yes, it's very important to us. Yes, it does hit home. And, and yes, we are concerned about it. Um, you know, protocols. During a meeting do not allow us to have a discussion, uh, which is why we're not allowed to answer these concerns, but. You know, as, as a superintendent, I, I, uh, my, my ask is to please get those concerns or, or, uh, you know, the questions that were mentioned out today. Um, out to the individuals or out to the general, uh. District, so that they know that we are concerned, that they know we are working on, on these items. And we have been working on these items. Uh, we already had some plans in place and we already have the wheel rolling, um, and safety is. And should be our number one concern for our kids and our family, as we have family members that either attend school, work at the district, or we know. Of family members, you know, ob- obviously that, that work within the, the district as well. So it is very important. I just wanna get that message out. To the general public and the, the community that's watching us. Um, so yes, thank you. With that being said, um. Before we do adjourn, we are going into closed session again. Um, so we'll hold off the journey. We are gonna close. Um, in memory of those that lost their lives in the, uh, fire, the recent fires. And also memory of, uh, Ms. Alice, Alex Robles-Han, uh, granddaughter to Senator Bob Archileta. So can we have a please, uh, moment of silence? I'm starting now. Thank you very much. So go ahead and break and, uh, go into closed session.